Committee in the whole is called to order. We're going to begin, well first off, I want to say a couple of things. We're going to be shooting for voting on Wednesday, the 18th. So, or earlier, but we're going to try and make a hard and fast deadline that we're going to get this thing done and voted on by sometime on the 18th, on Wednesday. So, I might be a little bit antsy up here in terms of the debate and things of that nature. By no means are we going to do anything that's going to squelch debate, but you know, it is going to be important, I think, that we stay to the greatest extent on topic. We are beginning Chapter Six, subject to motion of the committee. We bypassed Chapter Five and will deal with that last because Chapter Five deals with this proposal to borrow. And there is no, there is no view common to the committee of the whole that we ought to discuss borrowing before we finish the provisions in Chapter Six, since the provisions in Chapter Six may have some impact upon the necessity to borrow. So we'll begin with Chapter Six. What we'll do is we'll go section by section with Chapter Six as it is written. And then at the end of that, we will entertain motions to add new sections to Chapter Six. And upon the conclusion of all new motions to Chapter Six, Chapter Six will be done. So we'll begin Chapter Six, Section One, Autonomous Agencies COLA Annuity Share. Senator Calvo, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, in fact, I was hoping that members of the administration would be here for this particular area. You know, it's obvious with the 2007 budget, when the calculation for the cost of living was, came about, came about with, you know, recognition that those COLA payments would be made not only to the General Line Agency retirees, but also the retirees of these particular agencies that are mentioned here. And I guess what my main concern here is that if we are to ratify this particular section, I would assume that there should be a, an adjustment in the figures on what was appropriated for COLA payments. And I don't, I don't know how many retirees are from GPA, AB, WOMP, GETCA, Guam Housing, the Government of Guam Retirement Fund, the Port, Waterworks, and GVB. And obviously, I just said, there are these folks, and if we are to have them, the agencies take that share, then there should be some sort of an adjustment in general fund appropriations. That's my comment at this point. And I guess my request would be for the administration to provide us for some numbers as to what these adjustments would be.
Why, just out of, in the way of a suggestion, I'd suggest that perhaps maybe a member of the staff could call up BBMR and find out what those numbers are supposed to be, and we will permit a revisitation of this section as we move on, simply for the purpose of entertaining that particular point that you raised. Is there anybody else who wishes to discuss Section One? It would be probably proper to point out that Section One transfers an existing cost from the general fund to autonomous agencies, couple of which are PUC-controlled, and charge Senator Wompette, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, there is that responsibility now that they're going to be paying the COLA. Of course, we know that they are going to charge, and we have that concern by our people in particular, who could barely actually make ends meet when it comes to GPA and GWA. Water and power are two of the most critical utility agencies that our people are actually being hit hard. And we had that discussion, as a matter of fact, last year, when we're seeing now that in our billing, that that is being reflected, and they're being deducted for it. So, I mean, for those two in particular, I know I would like to, and I don't know how my colleagues feel at all about it, but I think that because it is something that everyone basically would use on a daily basis, as for their quality of life, that I think that that should be, I feel that that should be the responsibility of the government, and rather than the individual agencies. So, my motion then basically would be to delete GWA and GPA.
Okay, there's a motion to delete from Section One in the list of various autonomous agencies, the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Waterworks Authority, in recognition of the fact that they'll probably just pass it on to the ratepayers. So, is there any discussion on the motion by Senator Wompette to delete GPA and GWA from this list? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Followed by Senator Shumza.
Mr. Chairman, I share the same concern that Senator Wompette has with regards to what this is going to cost, and I think that it would be prudent on our part, first off, and I agree with the good senator from Mitie, that in order to be able to capture, and it was brought up actually by my good senator from Mololo too as well, a good sense to capture the, what the true cost of this, you know, this reduction, or whatever you were going to call this, what this is going to mean, with regards to general fund, or what it will mean to the ratepayers. So, with regards to the discussion on the motion, sir, I would like to state my objection to the motion pending information that could be brought to light by the administration, or for that matter, GW or GPA, they can come in, and what is this cost going to mean?
Would you like to suspend discussion on Section One until this information can be provided?
Yes, sir.
Senator Wompette, would you have a problem suspending discussion on your motion until the information can be provided?
No problem, Mr. Speaker. I think that's a great idea, because then we wouldn't know what the dollar money is.
Senator Calvo? Senator Calvo, could we have someone from your staff call BBMR and find out what those numbers are over the phone? So we don't wind up...
I'll do that right away, Mr. Chairman.
Waiting for Godot here, for someone to show up and tell us what those numbers are. All right, we'll suspend discussion on Section One until that information is provided. When we return to Section One, we will be in the middle of Senator Wompette's motion to remove GPA and GWA from this list. We are now in Section Two. Section Two proceeds. Is there any, Senator Calvo?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chair, on Section Two, the only concern I have here in the language, on 15 and 16, it says notwithstanding Title V, GCA 22425, all real property tax proceeds levied pursuant to Title XI, GCA, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's important that we get very clear here that this should only be for tax amnesty. And this is really the intent of this particular provision over here. So, what, what I'm requesting is that on lines 15 and 16, we just make, I like to make a motion that these should be all real property tax amnesty. So you add the word amnesty after tax, and then of course proceeds levied.
Our tax amnesty proceeds levied pursuant to Title XI, GCA, Section 24103.
Where they're talking about prior years, including year 2005.
Senator Calvo, do you know precisely where you want to put those words, amnesty?
I would put it right after, all real property tax amnesty. I would put it after, right after tax, in line 16. All real property tax amnesty proceeds.
That would not confuse the section because of the following language pursuant to Title XI.
Tell you what, Mr. Speaker, I'm bringing that point up, I'd better be very clear on this language, but anyway, that's the point I wanted to make, and I...
We'll come back to you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion on Section Two? Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, I certainly don't understand why we're doing this. There's nobody here from the administration to answer that question, and it's very important. And the reason why I think it's very important is, real estate property taxes, as you know, are dedicated to education, for the capital improvement programs of the Department of the Guam Public School System. It is where the money that is generated by the assessment on real estate property on Guam is placed into this territorial educational facilities fund, and then the fund basically does two things at this point in time, at this moment in time. One is, it pays for the debt service on the bonds that are, that were floated back in 1994, I believe, 93, 94, that pay for all the new schools and the repair of the existing schools that have really occurred over the last five years, I mean, over the last 15 years, basically. And then, any excesses that are collected over and above the proceeds are in fact supposed to be placed into the territorial educational facilities fund, and then appropriated by this body to capital projects for the public school system. Now, I don't understand why we're doing this. I know that the body has in the past availed itself of the excess of the proceeds of the real estate tax collected, over and above the required bond payments have been appropriated out of the fund to pay for other operations of this government, and that could exactly be the same process that occurs. So I just don't understand the need to...
Got a motion?
Yes, I move to delete this section.
Okay, there's a motion to delete Section Two. Any objection? Motion carries, Section Two is deleted. All right, we're on Section Three, reversion of unencumbered or unexpendanted continuing It's done. Section Three, Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, I'm just kind of, again, once again, I don't, I don't know what the effects of this will have. I do know that the departments that would be affected by this are the judiciary, of course, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the legislature, the OFB, the Guam Police Department, the Department of Corrections, and the Guam Fire Department, and I believe the Mayor's Council is included in this. So all of the unexpendited appropriations and unencumbered funds are to revert back. Now, again, I don't, I think the effect though, is that these are for not this fiscal year, but the prior fiscal year. And the areas that are affected most, I think, for example, would be the University of Guam, one, the University of Guam, and that is for that reason that, you know, we have to have a demonstrated effort of how these reversions affect the financial statements and the financial accounting of those departments and agencies. If we do this to the University of Guam, I know I had some very brief conversation with the, with the Controller or the Vice President of Finance at the University of Guam, and that if this happens, then they have to basically wipe that off their financial statements. They now show it as a receivable from the Government of Guam. They wipe that off, it affects the maintenance of effort or the funding levels at the University of Guam, and I'm not convinced, but this is the argument he's making, is that then it affects accreditation with regards to the support for the services of the University of Guam. But that's one area that we have to think about. Now, the other problem is that we do know that the administration has already, I think, charged against these appropriations.
I think cadets are funded out of this for GPD.
Exactly. And so if we wipe that out, we intend...
Is that where the cadets are?
You know, now say that it's not, we never funded it because it goes to the general fund. So I do know that this may be a problem for some of these departments and agencies, and without the administration sending any kind of justification at all, I just don't know what it accomplishes.
Is there a motion? Well, are you issuing a motion? Okay. Senator Shalaki, you're recognized. Okay, there's a motion to delete the entirety of Section Three. Is there any objection? No objection, the motion carries. Okay, we are now in Section Four. Any discussion about Section Four? Oh, boy. Senator Pangolino, I think this is actually mooted by the action that we've already taken, hasn't it?
Part of this is mooted, and, and part of it is not consistent with the recommendation of the latest actuarial valuation done by the retirement fund.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to delete this portion.
Okay, there's a motion to delete Section Cochrane. Is there any objection, new motion to delete Section Four? No objection? No objection, motion carries, Section Four is deleted. I see, Bob. Section Five. This is a moratorium on Senator Klitsky's extended office hours, keeping people open till six, and making them open at seven, and, you know, to second surf, the people of Guam. Senator Guthert, had her hand up first, followed by Senator Palacios, and then Senator Pangolino. Senator Guthert, you're recognized.
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. You know, on this section, Section Five, moratorium on extended hours in the Government of Guam, I'm just wondering, is there a law that prohibits government employees from working in hours other than eight to five?
No, on the contrary, there's a law that says now that you're supposed to, yeah, you're required now to be open from seven to six.
Right. But what I'm trying to say, Mr. Speaker, is, shouldn't directors of the departments and agencies have the authority to schedule...
Yes, they do.
The work hours of their employees?
They do.
And just like in the police department, there are three shifts, in the fire department, they have platoon on, platoon off.
Yes.
Shouldn't we have that kind of flexibility throughout the Government of Guam?
We do.
So, why should even overtime be an issue if directors have the opportunity to schedule their workers at times are in shifts to meet the needs of the community?
I don't know, this section is, I can do the overtime.
Okay, I'm just trying to point that out, that this may not be necessary at all. We can delete this.
Do you have a motion?
I move to delete.
All right, there's a motion by Senator Guthert to delete Section Five. Is there any objection to the deletion of Section Five? Go ahead. Senator Ternaria, you're recognized.
I don't object to the motion, but I understand that the administration, these conversations here have said that the reason that they wanted to do this is because some agencies take this to the literal point of having operations, air conditioning, you have personnel, the entirety of personnel, rather than flexing it. So I think that the intent was to try to remove the additional burden, financial burden that's associated with having employees working longer hours, and they would actually have, for example, I was told the judiciary would have their entirety of their clerk division open until 6:00 PM, rather than just having one or two employees, and having that employee come in a little bit later, or take a long lunch and say, well, we're going to have you open till 6:00 PM, so wait, I get overtime. So, I think the problem is that the intent was to remove the provision, so that we say, well, we're going to still have standard operating hours between eight and five, but we're not going to raise the cost of government to meet that obligation. And if we have administrators in agencies, and of course, the different branches is to say, we're going to have operating hours between six or seven AM to 6:00 PM, then that's going to incur a substantial increase in operations. I don't know that that's true if you have administration who can basically flex the hours and reduce the manpower to afford the services of the agencies or the branches of government which are required to the public, but simply to flex it so they have people who are on, a couple of people, you know, here in this division, a couple of people in that division, who come in later or maybe take a longer lunch and compensate for that. I don't have an objection to it, I think it ultimately comes down to management making prudent decisions on how to operate their agencies, rather than taking away the requirement.
Okay, on the motion by Senator Guthert, is there any, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, again, also speak regarding this issue, that the only complaint or grievance that I heard regarding the extended hours came from a few employees, but I have yet to hear grievance or complaint from the public. And I think the intent of this section, when it was originally passed, was to increase the opportunity for the public to get services. And this extended hours actually is confined only to service counters, such as the cashier or licensing and those things, and it's not department-wide. And I think this is a challenge for department heads, really, to use their imagination and continue the extended hours, but look at some flex time. So this is more internal, if there's any problem, it's manageable internally, and why they're not doing it? Well, they should be doing it. But in the interest of increased public service, I think that we should delete this section and maintain the extended hours, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
On the motion to delete by Senator Guthert, any further discussion, there being none? Oh, there is? Okay, Senator Blas, followed by Senator Shumza.
I'm a little confused here, Mr. Chair, with regards to the motion to delete, and maybe if I can direct this question to the good senator from Mingila, Dr. J. With regards to your deletion, are you basically stating that we want to continue to have the work hours?
If you read the section, Section Five says, "A moratorium is hereby in effect for extended hours of operation for government instrumentalities affected by 4GCA 41208. Such moratorium shall sunset on January 1, 2009." This provision, frankly, is a little confusing, but what I am trying to do, Mr. Speaker, by moving to delete the section is empower the directors of departments and agencies...
May I?
Yes.
Because I see this going into the philosophical when it is a very simple structural question. The section places a moratorium. The deletion of the section removes the moratorium, therefore, the existing law is in effect.
Correct.
The existing law requires seven to five for public service counters and any public service portions of the Government of Guam's office hours. So just, we just basically not have the moratorium is what the effect would be.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Senator Shumza, I believe you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're right, it's strictly, it's a very structural thing. Well, the laws are all in place to allow each director to decide how they're going to manage their resources, given the limited resources that we have. And basically, Section Five is a sunset provision, as I understand it. It is to be sunsetted until January 1, 2009. There is a motion by Senator Guthert to delete this, so therefore, it would go to perpetuity because the sunset has been removed. What I wanted to do was to find out the cost that we have in terms of the extended hours. I too have been talked to by the, by many different constituents, in terms of saying, for the amount of money that you spent keeping an operation open, and for extended public service, and the amount of revenues coming in, appears to show that we spent more on the dollar than what the government would get in. So if that is truly the case, we need to look at that, because with this limited resources that we have, extending hours of operations for window services, and it's costing us more to operate that extended hours than the revenues that we're getting in, we might be, it might be a cost benefit, but yet not necessarily cost-effective. I don't know yet if indeed the extended hours has been long enough, but I do know that the concerns in terms of cost is there. So, I would, if I'm in order, after we dispose of Senator Judy Guthert's motion to repeal the, and I need to know the language of 4GCA...
If you wish to make a motion to repeal this section, you can do so when we're done discussing this.
That's right. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I, like I said, we'll wait until after we dispose of Senator Guthert.
Okay, on Senator Guthert's motion on Section Five, is there any objection?
No objection.
With that objection, the motion carries, Section Five is deleted. We are now in Section Six, the creation of the Structural Stabilization Fund. I noticed that this actually includes a number of sections. How would you like to discuss this? Would you like to discuss the entirety of Section Six at once, or would you like to go 22901, 22902? All right, we'll do the entire section at one time. Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move to delete this section, and the reason why I move to delete this section is it really is redundant. There is in existence what we call the Rainy Day Fund, which is exactly the same objective as this fund that is being created. Now, I don't know why we want to recreate the wheel, you know, but this is the classic example of doing that. Maybe because we now have a structural deficit, we need a structural stabilization fund. But really, the Rainy Day Fund has the same purpose, it allows for the same investment opportunities, it allows for the appropriations, and it's really time that we just kind of follow existing law rather than creating new laws. For what purpose, I'm just not certain. So, in that respect, and I really think that having read the Rainy Day Fund's a little bit more comprehensive than this fund is. It's supposed to reduce the deficit, it's supposed to require a portion of the general revenues be set aside and fund the fund, just as this one is. So really, we're just being redundant in this area. And maybe it's because, you know, there's some new, nouveau deficit reduction fund nomenclature being bantered around on Wall Street, but if you take a look at across state constitutions and state legislatures, you'll find that rainy day fund is also a term of art used in this, so even Wall Street is familiar with the term rainy day fund. And, and so they understand its purpose, and if they read our law, they'll find out that we are in fact, have something in place, and all we have to do is commit ourselves to following it. So this is, I believe, superfluous to what we're trying to do, and is a reenactment of existing legislation that I believe is not necessary.
Make a motion, by the way? All right, so there's a motion to delete the section. Senator Calvo, on that motion, you're recognized.
Yeah, I understand the points made out by the previous speaker. I guess the concern I have of taking this thing out, obviously, we are in the, we are in the eyesight, in the view of Wall Street, in particular, too, what happened not too long ago in regards to the, to the placing of GovGuam on a credit watch as a result of the, of the use of a line of credit for payroll costs. I'm just in an interesting quandary here, because we have something already on the books that if the administration chooses to do so, can set up this rainy day fund. to do so, can set up this Rainy Day Fund. And with that, maybe the thing I'm going to do here, state for the record, so just as we move along in this legislative session, that if there is a motion or a move that occurs where this particular section is deleted, it is not because of the legislature's will or intent, or the government, or the administration will and intend to not create some sort of safety valve for, in regards to having a necessary reserve fund. Again, so I guess the point I'm making over here is, I see the reason for why the motion to delete. And my particular stance in this is that, you know, I think it's important, the concept of the Structural Stabilization Fund, but if it is indeed a redundancy and a repetition of current law, then obviously there's no need for that repetition. But again, I'm stating for the record, I think it's important that we have something like this. But again, if it is deemed to be redundant, then I can see why there is no necessity.
Perhaps everyone would be made to feel better if, when it comes time to add new sections to this, there was a very simple section that just said, "The Rainy Day Fund established pursuant to Section yada, yada, yada shall be da, da, da." Not too complicated. Let's not get inorganic here, but just something that, something that makes a statement about that. Okay? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate the concerns by both the good senator from Baragana and the good senator from Mitie. And once again, Mr. Chair, I would please recommend, obviously, the administration had the intent, or there was some intent for the administration with regards to putting this as part of their bill, and to fully become aware as to. I do have a concern, too, whether or not we're, like the good senator from Baragana had stated, are we reinventing the will, or was there a specific and a more meaningful purpose to the creation of this section? And I would suggest and would like, sir, if it can be possible that we ask the administration to, you know, when they come in, to forego ruling on this motion or voting on this motion, to find out what the administration had in, as far as their intent for this.
Senator Blas is proposing that we suspend voting on the motion until such time as the administration is able to respond to the question, "Why did you establish this fund when a fund already existed?" Senator Pangolinan?
Mr. Chair, just a point of information. I had discussions with the administration representatives on this and pointed out to them the fact that we have an existing Rainy Day Fund. And their, one of the replies was, well, you know, we wanted to do, to create something that Wall Street is more familiar with. But when I mentioned to them that there's probably over 30 states and state constitutions that refer to a stabilization fund as a Rainy Day Fund, and all of these jurisdictions also float bonds and, you know, are under the radar of Wall Street, their response, well, you know, I think it's just something that we want because it's ours. But they recognize that it, in fact, you know, accomplishes the same thing. Couple with your bill, Mr. Chair, that actually sets aside 10% of the general fund revenues.
I recall.
To fund these things. We have more than adequate legislation on the books to show our commitment. All we have to do is demonstrate it by putting those laws into practice. And just as a point of information also, I understand his request to table the thing, but I think the standing rules, Mason, say you can't, you know, table it.
I know. I'm just trying to give everybody an opportunity.
Yeah, but that was my point of information with regards to my discussion with the administration.
Again, you know, I understand the desire to not rob the administration of a potential tool that it could use in discussions with standard and poor's. And speaking entirely ex catheter here, we may be able to accomplish both purposes just by writing a new good section that takes existing language and dresses it up a bit and, you know, puts a new set of clothes on it. I just noticed someone from the administration is in fact here. John Delarosa, I see him in the back there. Yeah, let me just, well, you know, we got a little time. Let me just catch up, John. Did you hear the entirety of the discussion?
I did. And I have to apologize. On this section of the bill, I'm more comfortable with Lou Perez commenting on it, and she is on her way down, if you could indulge us otherwise.
On her way down, like?
She's in her car, two minutes away.
From DOA?
From Adel.
From Adel, oh, okay. She's going down.
I do know this. I do know that we have had discussions, and this, the language of this fund was crafted with the support of the auditors and with the standard and poor's credit watch issues in mind. So, and there was recognition that a Rainy Day Fund does exist. And to the extent that this was different or necessary for the S and P issue, I can't speak to it as, with as much knowledge as Lou can. So that's why I didn't feel comfortable commenting on the differences or the need for this specific fund.
I'll tell you what, Senator Pangolinan is right. We are in the middle of a motion. It's very hard for me to just, you know, sues bond to say we're not going to proceed on the motion. Senator?
Well, as the gentle lady is on the way down, just motion that we recess until we have her here to speak on.
Yeah, it's kind of odd to recess in the middle of a motion, though, Senator Ternaria. That's my problem. I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and call for the vote. If the, you know, if the vote succeeds, that doesn't mean someone, can we do it with the understanding that it doesn't mean someone cannot create a similar fund if they chose to as an additional section? Okay? Can we do it that way? Because I don't want, I don't want any, you know, arguments that we can't create a similar fund if we choose to. If the motion fails, that also doesn't mean that we can't modify it in some other way as well. So on that motion by Senator Pangolinan, is there an objection?
Objection.
Okay, there is an objection. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It appears that the motion does not have sufficiency of votes, so the motion does not carry. Is there any further discussion on this section?
No.
Would you be in favor of suspending discussion on this section until Lou arrives and coming back and talking about it a little bit more when Lou's here?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, then that's what we'll do. Section 7 no longer exists. It's already been deleted from this document, so, so has Section 8. So we are now at the severability clause. Section 9, is there any discussion on the severability?
Isn't this a section to add new amendments?
I know, I know. I'm just asking about severability first. I know Senator Klitschko is no longer a member of the body, but he was well-renowned for moving to delete severability clauses. I thought perhaps Senator Palacios might, you know, carry on the tradition of deletion of severability clauses, but apparently that's not the case. Well, I got a severability clause on the paper in front of me.
Yeah.
Section 9, severability. Hey, I'm looking at the one that every other chair's been looking at, apparently. It's the one in front of me. I hope I am.
844-32207.
Yeah, 844-32207. It does have a severability clause. It got severed. All right, we are at the severability clause. Anybody have anything to say about the severability clause, going once, going twice? All right, there's nothing on the severability clause. We'll now entertain new motions for new sections. We'll take a one-minute recess so everybody can get their act together here on new motions. All right, get it. Now, what that means, guys, is since these are new sections, they do have to be in writing. All right? It would really help unless they're super simple, and the clerk can just jot them down. It would be good if they were in writing. It would be good if everybody had a copy. It would be good if all this was squared away. So we'll take a brief recess, just a minute or two, and then we're going to start. Okay? Call to order. I'm sorry, I'd forgotten that we did decide that when someone from the administration arrived, we would go back, because some people had some questions about Section 1, dealing with the autonomous agencies' COLA annuity share. John, are you in a position to answer a question about how much the COLA share is for GPA or GWA? Lou would also be in a position to answer that question? All right, and continue with your, getting your amendments together. Unless someone's, somebody already have an amendment passed out?
My.
Okay, can we begin by making sure that the chair here has a complete set of all amendments? I'd like to ask the clerk, I'm sorry, Sergeant-at-Arms. Matthew, I want to be sure that I have now in front of me one absolute total complete set of amendments. So can you put one together? Because I don't want to, I don't want to hunt through this pile here. Ishizaki. This is an amendment that establishes a user's fee schedule for the Mayor's Council of Guam. I believe the user's fee schedule is attached. Does everybody have this amendment? Is there anyone who does not have this Ishizaki amendment?
No.
Yeah, it's a two-page. No, it's two. Has everyone got it? Because we're going to discuss it. All right, Senator Ishizaki, you're recognized on your motion, on your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the request of the Mayor's Council and subsequent to, pursuant to Public Law 24-97, there was a request from the mayors to impose and establish user fee for using the facilities. So this is a result of their request. And so I move that we adopt this amendment as part of our budget process.
That's all you want to say on your amendment?
Yes, sir. It's open to discussion.
Okay, Senator Rumpet, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I understand, of course, the need to do this, and, because I know that GPSS has something very similar for its facilities. My concern here is that we do have certain schools that are actually right next to some of these facilities, and there's always been a memorandum of understanding normally with the mayors and the schools. You know, one example is Dedidu Middle School. We actually, when I was a principal there, I would use the baseball field during the day, during school hours only. And I can understand is that to make sure that that doesn't happen. At Marshall-Sablon Elementary School, there also, right next to it, are baseball field, tennis courts, and other things of that sort. So I just want to make sure that, and I don't know whether we should include this, that the schools, at least during school hours, not be charged a fee.
Are you asking someone to yield a question?
Yes, the author of the amendment.
Senator Ishizaki, do you yield a question from Senator Rumpet?
Yes, I do hear a question, Dr. Judy, and I'm open to that, so we can add a provision in here to make sure the schools are covered.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I do that real quickly? Just write it, the amendment is that, that at least?
Okay, we'll take a very brief recess as Senator Rumpet can write her amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Committee of the House is back in session. As we're waiting for Senator Rumpet's amendment to be, is it being passed out now?
It's being passed out.
Can the Sergeant-at-Arms ensure that I have a copy in my hand? I'm not interested in Senator Calvo's, I'm interested in Senator Rumpet's. Okay, this is Senator Rumpet's amendment to the amendment. Does everybody have a copy? This is an amendment to Senator Ishizaki's amendment. She is adding, "All public schools are exempt from this fee schedule for usage during school hours." And then she's adding, "All advertisements at community centers and recreational facilities except for the Paseo Stadium addressed by this fee schedule shall not advertise alcohol, tobacco, or political campaign advertisement," which means that nobody can sponsor anymore a softball team and put their name on the back of the jersey.
Exactly.
It says, "All advertisements." It doesn't specify what kind of advertisement.
No, because it's posters, banners, and billboards.
But it doesn't say that. It says all.
Yeah, they're fees.
But this is a separate sentence. It stands alone. "All advertisements at community centers." That means a handbill. It means, it, no, it doesn't say that, though.
It's addressed by the fee schedule.
All right, in any event, shall we take it from the top? Is there any discussion on this motion? On this, the Rumpet?
Oh, no, that's what you're saying. Oh, no, we're talking about.
No, I can't give you 30 seconds. You can wait, and we can have someone else talk. Senator Pincot, do you wish, Speaker Pincot, do you wish to speak on this?
No, that isn't addressed. That shouldn't be.
Tell you what, Senator Rumpet, do you wish to speak on it a little bit?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Just real quickly to clarify some things. For those who didn't hear it earlier, what I wanted to do was to exempt schools, the public school systems, who actually use some of the facilities, like, for example, baseball fields, right next to a school, an elementary school. And Marshall-Sablon Elementary School uses the field there. Dedidu Beneventi Middle School also uses the baseball field. And it says only a memorandum of understanding. But what this would do is that the schoolchildren will be exempted then from using the facilities during school hours. And that's normally the arrangement. The other is advertisements at the community centers and recreational facilities that are affected by the fee schedule. And if you look on Page 2 anyway, in the amendment proffered by Senator Ishizaki, is that the advertisements at community and recreational facilities are actually posters, banners, or billboards. So, and those are the ones that this amendment, you know, is addressing.
Just for purposes of construction, addressed by this fee schedule could just as easily be referring to the community centers and recreational facilities as it could be to the advertisements. So I do think you might want to work that language. That's neither here nor there. Senator Barnes?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this amendment. I have no problems, no objections to this amendment, but I'd like to add that maybe a provision or an inclusion in there saying, "All public schools are exempt from this fee schedule for usage during school hours and/or any school program," because if I'm not mistaken, a lot of the games.
Here's our problem. We can do an amendment to the amendment, but I can't do an amendment to the amendment to the amendment. So what we will do, just so we don't get crazy here, is after this amendment is disposed of, if you wish to amend it further, I'll recognize that.
Okay.
But it's just going to get very confusing if we're doing amendments to amendments to amendments. Okay?
Thank you.
Senator Calvo?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, on the amendment as proposed by Senator Rumpet, the issue I have is just of practicality. If anyone is to go into a tournament now on the weekends for soft, you know, softball, and I'm talking, a lot of these are adult, adult softball leagues, the most of, if not all, of, actually, the majority of most of the sponsored softball tournaments around the island are usually done by companies that sell, distribute alcohol, alcoholic beverages. And, you know, I'm just making this known to the senatorial body, because if this does occur, currently, there are, I'm sure there are commitments made when it comes, I think even Parks and Rec, as a general, as a, as a general government agency, as well as. even Parks and Rec, as a general, as a general government agency, as well as many of the Mayors, have made agreements with many companies for sponsorship of leagues. Like, again, I do understand that, you know, my kids play in middle school and high school leagues, and obviously, many of the middle school and high school league, whether it's rugby, or basketball, or volleyball, are usually sponsored by companies that do not, that do not represent these types of products. But there are also, and my concern is, especially in particular to adult softball leagues, if this is to pass, then there may be many, there will be a big disruption, I anticipate, in sponsorship of these events. And that is my only concern. And if this thing, measure goes through, there is in all probability going to be a disruption on many of the summer leagues that will be sponsored by Mayors. And again, a lot of the proceeds for the Mayors are to help their meager resources. And I think with this particular language, then it may kill off some of the goat and goose. Anyway, that's my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Would the body have a problem dividing the question? Would we have a problem dividing the question? This really is a two-part amendment.
Yes, it's divided into parts.
Because it's actually two amendments in one. One has to do with exempting children.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can we do the first one, and then we can discuss the second one?
So, do I have a unanimous consent to divide the question?
Yes.
All right. Because it's actually two amendments in one amendment. Because one amendment has to do with the schoolchildren, another amendment has to do with sponsorship. They're actually very different and unrelated. So if the body is willing to divide the question, all right, on the first part of the amendment, dealing with public schools are exempt from this fee schedule for usage during school hours, that specifically, is there any objection? Okay, that portion carries. On the section, "All advertisements at community centers and recreational centers except Paseo Stadium addressed by this fee schedule shall not advertise alcohol, tobacco, or political campaign advertisement." Is there an objection?
Well, I...
Okay, there's an objection. All right, on that motion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, the motion carries. It passed. It's passed. Okay, I'm going to ask, oh, you wish to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a motion that's being printed right now.
What is the motion?
I get to, let me get it.
Or school events, is that what you wanted to add?
Senior citizens and youth.
Wait, wait, on this specifically?
Yes.
Okay, Senator Barnes has an amendment to the main motion, that after, after the words "school hours" adds, "All youth and senior citizen activities shall also be exempt from this fee schedule." Is there anything that won't be exempt from the fee schedule at the rate we're going?
Mr. Chair, there is a provision already in law that specifically states that youth and senior citizens will not be charged. And I'm trying to look at that for that public law right now.
Okay, on this motion, any objection?
Yes.
Wait, 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 wait.
Yes, Mr. Speaker...
Senator Pingo, you're recognized.
On the motion, that this is a wholesale amendment, that really, after you pass this with what we got already, it would just exempt the entire island. And so...
Which amendment are you talking about, Senator Pingo?
I'm talking about, first of all, the amendment that was made by, okay, Senator Wampat.
It's already passed.
And then, of course, the amendment now being made on the floor to exempt all youth and senior citizen...
From the fee schedule, only.
On the fee schedule?
Yeah. Only from the fee schedule.
Well...
Senior citizen centers.
Yes, you know, I think, I think it needs to be defined better, Mr. Speaker, as, you know, right now. Because the way I see this is that it becomes more problematic later on, because everybody will be exempted. And then it ends up that we're not really going to get any fees whatsoever.
Senator Tornaria?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then Senator Hahn.
Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the sentiments of all of our colleagues, but we're effectively putting in a fee. Who uses the facilities? The youths and the senior citizens. At what point do we actually, when you implement fees, actually start to assess them? Who and what defines what is youth and senior citizens? What's in between? Where, I guess, we're only going to be charging this in middle age? And what is middle age? You know, you really start to get into some ambiguous stuff, and we're looking at increasing the fees to be able to offset the cost for the Mayors and try to generate revenue for them to maintain those facilities, and we're not charging those same people which fall into the category of youth and senior citizens who use the facilities, not being insensitive to the needs of those people, but we also want to make sure that if we're going to do something, what is the net effect of it? And I think that, at the end of the day, if you're not youth and you're not senior citizen, who actually will, and especially will remove the ability for sponsorship for all those companies and political advertisement? That, in effect, means that, well, I can't sponsor any team, and you can sponsor a team, and no political candidate for any office can sponsor a team at any of these community centers where any of these activities take place. So what are you really going to get at the end of the day when you increase these fees? And the $200 from 100, it already is a pretty decent amount of money that should be otherwise going to those community centers through the Mayors. And, yeah, we don't want the kids to have to pay for it during their school hours, and Lord knows, we don't want to have to pay, have our senior citizens pay for it either. But who is going to pay for it? We're looking at some cost recovery here, which effectively will not be in place. And we've already passed a prior amendment which effectively will wipe out a significant portion of the sponsorship that's already taking place now. And then if we do this as well, and we say, well, the seniors and the youth will not pay for it, who is, and who is the youth and who's the senior citizens, and who defines what those are? And ultimately, who will be paying for this? I think you're going to find that it's going to be a very small fragment of this community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Luhan, and then Senator Calvo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if we're still on the, that motion, because I kind of want to separate it out as well.
We're on the Barnes amendment.
Yes. You know, in regards to the senior citizens, if we can separate that out, because like, right now, the senior citizens, SPIMA, is utilizing the senior citizen centers at this point. And so now they're going to pay for it for what they're utilizing already. So if we can kind of separate that out, and Public Health also has entities where they go into the senior citizens center, and Gura had built the senior citizen center for the utilization of senior citizens. And again, as I read this, as I read it here, I want to now exempt, say, SPIMA now from going there on a daily basis and paying rent and what they're already using. So I'm wondering if we can kind of separate out that amendment as well to address this issue. I'm confused.
There's a motion, basically, to divide the question between youth and senior citizens. Is there any objection to that? Okay, there's an objection to dividing the question. All those in favor of dividing the question signify by raising your hand. The motion fails, the question is not divided. We are on the motion still of Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Calvo, you're recognized.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, you're my, you have been my mentor in my, you know, you've been there a little bit longer than being legislature. And I remember one time, outside there in the back, in your side office, and you told me about the issues of unintended consequences. If we can recall, the amendment that has been proffered by the freshman senator was made in order to deal with the shortfalls of the Mayors and allowing them to have resources so they can provide those necessary services that they always seem to end up having to provide because of one shortcoming in, or another, in our government. The last amendment that just passed, obviously, you know, there are many tournaments, and most of them are softball, and most of them are either one brand or another. Well, that has just eliminated, and I mean eliminated, it's not just on, it's not just on posters, it's on advertisements. So most of those folks run between the age of 18, and these adult, and usually they're Gov, some of them are Gov Guam leagues. It's just eliminate, eliminated those folks between 18 and 55. And some old-timers still try to be youngsters, and some youngsters try to get into Masters leagues. But in any event, it's taken the major funding source for their, for these mayor-sponsored tournaments out of the equation. In the next breath, we take out an amendment that would eliminate all youth and senior citizen activities. And I'll tell you, if I were a company, and that's a good idea, actually, because if a company sponsoring a youth league, which a lot of companies do sponsor youth leagues, then it precludes us having to, any company having to pay for, or any corporate sponsorship having to pay any fee to the Mayors for youth programs. And obviously, since the good senator overseeing SPIMA, GARP SPIMA, where you have certain agencies that are also sponsoring senior citizen-related activities, based on this language now, that will be exempted. And let me tell you, they're all good, well-intentioned, well-intended exemptions. We are here to do also social responsibility policy as well. But in, but as a result of our intent, good intentions for social responsibility, we've probably eliminated most of the funding sources for the Mayors for adult-oriented activities. And now with the passage of this upcoming amendment, obviously, I don't think GARP SPIMA, I mean, they can find other ways to spend their money, so they won't have to, have to be charged fees from the Mayors. And obviously, all these youth sports leagues that are now being sponsored by many corporate citizens, they won't be, they won't be subject to these fees as well. So unintended consequences, Mr. Chairman, I talked too long. Unintended consequences here, we may be hurting the Mayors more than helping them.
I understand. In the future...
I know, I was talking too long.
No, no, it's not that. In the future, the prior amendment has already passed, all right? So further, Senator Wampat's amendment has passed, so further debate on that amendment is not in order, all right? We are talking right now about an amendment by Senator Barnes that has to do with exempting youth and senior citizens from the fee schedule. And I would really like to ask everyone from here on in to confine their comments to Senator Barnes' amendment having to do with this, because we just can't keep talking over and over again about water that is already, the bridge is already under the water, okay? So let's not keep going back and talking about it. Who wanted to talk specifically about Senator Barnes' amendment? Senator Pangolinan, Senator Wampat, and then Senator Espisho.
May I call for a point of order, though?
Certainly.
Isn't the amendment right now in front of us amending the amendment made by Senator Ishizaki and Senator Wampat?
No.
No?
No. Senator Barnes, Senator Wampat's amendment has already passed, it's already been amended.
I realize that, but actually, this is an add-on.
But Senator Ishizaki's amendment has already been...
That's the main amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Right, so if you vote no on the main amendment, it all falls apart.
No, but the amendment made by Senator Ishizaki, plus the amendment of Wampat, already passed.
No.
No?
No.
So Ishizaki's amendment has not passed?
No.
Okay.
Okay. About Ishizaki's, you could talk, come on, guys, we're beating a dead horse.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, perhaps, you know, I'm trying to figure out exactly the effect of the amendment when it's attached to the original amendment.
By Senator Barnes.
By Senator Barnes.
Thank you.
Now, when you say sports, youth and senior citizen activities will not have to pay the fee schedule, and so the fee schedule is referred to using the gym and so forth, but the, I think what it does is, it still allows the Mayors, for example, to charge for youth activities that are league-sponsored, is the way I would read it. And so if it's children wanting to use the facility, you know, without a league sponsorship, then it may exempt them on an individual basis. But if I look at it, there's a league use, a tournament use, and those are what the charges are for. So if you kind of try to fit in the amendment to what is being defined by the fee schedule, it doesn't preclude these sponsors from paying for those activities that involve youth, is the way I read it. And it's the same with regards to the sponsorship of youth facilities that they now don't have to pay. Well, frankly, I don't want our youth to have a Budweiser or Miller Lite 10 and under soccer league.
Again, can we try not to go backwards?
You know, because we're saying that we're going to deny these youth, all of these sponsorship, no, I think we have some really good...
Moot point, moot point, moot point.
But what I'm saying is that, if I read what the main amendment does and how this fits to the main amendment, I don't think it precludes programs from being charged for the use of the facilities. That's the way I read it, I may be wrong.
Thank you. Senator Wampat, you're recognized. Senator Espisho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to acknowledge the Senator from Engilau, the mover of this amendment, for bringing up a even greater concern with this, with the amendment offered by Senator Ishizaki. I do support the Munia Barnes amendment, because really, we don't want to have to charge any after-school program or any youth or senior citizens who need to use this facility. The gentleman from Timuning brought up a good point, that the senior citizen centers are government-owned and operated, and with the net effect of this main motion pass, if it pass, would that net effect mean that those Manamco will now have to start paying for the facilities that they use? I want to support the Munia Barnes amendment, and I will, but I want to stress, this is why we have a AAA process, or even this is why we have public hearings, Mr. Speaker. This is very different from raising license fees or any other government fees, because with the driver's license fee increase, we know exactly who that's going to impact. Now, with these proposed fees for the league and tournament fees, would an unintended consequence be that if an organization can't pay for their tournament fee, where would that organization go? Would they not be exposed to a positive health, healthy alternatives? And will we be creating even greater social problems by passing this fee schedule? So the Munia Barnes amendment addresses the first concern with how we have to provide for these kinds of positive, healthy alternatives for young adults. And even ironically, the move to divide the question to address youth versus Manamco paying, we all know very well, Mr. Speaker, that it's our grandmas and grandpas that pay for the things that we need. In most cases, they pay for their grandchildren's baseball needs, football, whatever the case may be. So I move to, I support the Munia Barnes amendment, and when we get to the main motion, I'd also make other suggestions for that fashion. But I move to, I stand in full support of Munia Barnes.
Okay, on the Munia Barnes amendment specifically, any objection? No objection? No objection? I see hands, but I'm not sure if there are objections. Is there an objection? Okay, there's no objection. Motion carries. I didn't hear an objection. Does that mean that you objected?
Your objection to Munia Barnes?
Yes, on the Munia Barnes amendment, was there an objection? That's an objection.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker, you already called for the question.
No, we'll go ahead and do the vote. I'm seeing a couple of hands go up now.
There would, there would be, be, need to be a motion for reconsideration.
Understood, but we're gonna call for the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker, shouldn't there be a motion for reconsideration? You already wrapped the gavel.
You know what, I'm gonna go ahead with the original motion, because if there's this much of a division between people not voting and people refusing to object, um, then clearly it was the will of the body. I, you're right, Senator Espisho, I gavel it in.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, we are now on the main motion, as amended by Senator Wampat and Senator Barnes. Is there any further discussion on that?
Well, the, uh, Mr. Speaker, on, on the main motion, you know, the, the section one of, uh, Senator Ishizaki, on the last, uh, wording of, uh, sentence here, he says, "Each village's mayor is authorized to collect payment for the following," which means that the, uh, mayors may collect or may not collect, so it's really up to the mayors, you know, of, the mayor of every village to decide whether they're gonna collect any fees for, for the use of the gymnasium, or the basketball court, or for the tennis, you know, tennis court in the village that they have, uh, authority over. And so, you know, to me, the, the other amendments, uh, that were made, uh, kind of already making mood, because I don't know which mayors really would come out and, and, uh, really be charging for the youth and senior citizen, you know, with, with the use of the word authorize, you know, it's not requiring the mayors to collect, it's just authorizing the mayors to collect. So, that's the big difference, that the, the mayors do have, uh, a flexibility here in determining who should be charged and who should not be charged.
Thank you, Senator Pingo. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on the main motion? Senator Lujan, followed by Senator Palacios and the Senator Pangolinan.
Mr. Speaker, I, I just wanna get clarification, if I, if I may, uh, in regards to, um, the, the fee schedule regarding senior citizens, I'm just wondering, um, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman, if the, um, um, the Munia Barnes amendment applies to the senior citizen center exemption of senior citizen activities currently going on? The, um, I'm just wondering, important information in regards to, or, uh, get clarification?
To the author.
Yes, I guess to the author, or to, I don't know, to the author of the amendment or to the author of the-
We're not on an amendment right now, we're on the main.
Well, I just wanna get clarification in regards to the fee schedule regarding senior citizen center, whether the, the-
That would be best directed at the author of the main motion.
Okay.
Senator Ishizaki.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair. You know, uh, the, the intentions I had were, I think, very, very, uh, supportive of the needs of the mayor, the mayors of Guam, and, but I, I see that we're going down a road where it's getting too complicated, we're getting too many exemptions, and, and perhaps this is something that should require a full public hearing, so I would like to withdraw my amendment.
Not quite that simple, as far as-
Not that simple.
As far down the road as we've gone, it is no longer that simple, Senator Ishizaki. Um, I wish it were, but your amendment has been amended multiple times subsequent to that, I don't think it's possible for you just to say, "I quit." Uh, what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to vote on that.
No, I, I, I beg your pardon, Mr. Speaker, I, the, the main motion, the main mover, the motion do have the authority, the right to, to, to make that motion.
He has to make a motion, certainly.
If this motion passed, then all the others that were passed, it becomes moot.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not arguing that he hasn't the right to make a motion, I'm arguing that he doesn't have the right to simply say, "I withdraw, and therefore it's gone."
So that means you're gonna call for the vote?
I'm gonna call for a vote.
Okay.
So on, on, you know, Senator Ishizaki is moving that, that basically he wants to withdraw his, his motion here, so all those in favor of the withdrawal of the main motion, which will have the result of extinguishing all subsequent amendments, please signify.
Objection.
We understand that there's an objection, please signify by raising your hand. Will eliminate Senator Ishizaki's? All right, it's eight.
No, what we're going to do is we're gonna bring Ms. Lou Perez in so she can answer the questions with respect to section one. Can we bring Ms. Perez in, please?
Sergeant at arms, can you go see if Ms. Perez is out there, please? No, no, we're gonna start with, uh, on section one, there was a question that was asked Okay, we're gonna begin with- Section one, back at the beginning of chapter six, we, uh, we halted discussion so that the question could be answered. How much money are we talking about if we, um, follow, uh, the suggestion of Senator Wampat, that we extract the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Water Authority, uh, from the requirement to pay their own share of Cola Anudie? So the first question is, uh, if, um, oh, the first question is, how much is GPA, how much would GPA have to pay if it were left in?
Okay, if, uh, GPA were, had to pay in, they would pay three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
And GWA?
Uh, GWA would have to pay in two hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay, um, can someone, uh, please, um-
Uh, GPA is three, GPA is three eight two eight hundred, three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred.
Well, Mr. Speaker, may I ask also, how much would it cost for the port authority?
Sure.
Uh, the port authority, uh, three hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. Three three nine nine zero zero.
Okay, now, everybody was asking that question, that question has been answered with respect to GPA and GWA. Senator Wampat, would you like to restate your motion to, uh, extract GPA and GWA from this list of autonomous agencies in section one?
Mr. Chairman, you're right. Uh, the, the two particular agencies that we're talking about here, uh, who would be carrying and, uh, the burden of having to pay for the Cola, uh, are Guam Power Authority and Guam Water Works primarily, because those are two agencies, basically, if you look at it, every citizen, uh, or resident on, or, or anyone who lives here, basically, are, um, can't live without either one of those, but for all the others, it's just a, a, a certain group of, of individuals and those who basically can, can afford it, so I would like to, to make that motion then, that both GPA and GWA be, uh, deleted from-
Okay, the motion is to delete, to GPA and-
Okay, on that motion, may I call for about a minute recess? Uh, yeah, I wanna, uh, talk about that motion, but I'd like to, uh, make an amendment to her motion.
You just wanna add something else?
Yes, uh-huh.
You can add it.
Hmm.
No need for one-minute recess if you're just gonna add it.
I'd like to add the Port Authority of Guam.
Okay, on Senator, on Speaker Pingo's motion, add-
The reason why I'm asking, Mr. Speaker, right now, they, they, they are on the process of getting a gantry crane, and it's gonna cost about seven million dollars, the, and the other thing they need, and on top of that, oh, twelve million six hundred thousand, you know, to procure, like, the, uh, to take care of the earthquake problem that they have, the typhoon, uh, problem that still remains to be done, the, um, procurement of mobile gantry, uh, fork leaves, and also to, to get, to actually upgrade a lot of the places, you know, the, the, the entire Port Authority of Guam, and they have a wish list here that needs to be taken care of, of about thirteen million dollars, and so if you add on this additional burden, they, they won't be able to, to, to do it, and so, you know, with the preparation of the eight thousand Marines coming in, and, and, you know, that the Port Authority as it is right now, just, it was operating on the red, and now, in the last three years, is now operating on the black, but they're just barely having, you know, the funds to, to, to pay for the actual equipment that they need, so that's why I'm asking my colleagues to, to include, include the Port Authority at this time.
Okay, on Speaker Pingo's amendment to include the Port Authority in the list of exemptions that Senator Wampat has proposed, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. On Senator Wampat's motion, as amended by Speaker Pingo to exempt GPA, GWA, and now the Port Authority of Guam, uh, from this list of autonomous agencies that will be paying their Cola Anudie share, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Okay, now, the other thing that we were going to ask Lou about with respect to chapter six, if memory serves, uh, was there anything else, anything like that? I guess not, I guess we're on the Structural Stabilization Fund of, oh, we, didn't we repeal that? Okay, it's repealed, but we are gonna give them an opportunity to pitch it, right?
Is it repealed this, or what was repealed there?
It's repealed, structural.
Oh, it's not a part of it?
No, it's gone, but you can, we're gonna give them a chance to talk about it, right? So, Lou, you have an opportunity to talk about the Structural Stability Fund.
Uh, basically, um, as has been stated by members of the legislature, the Structural, or the Budget Stabilization Fund is really intended to do the same thing as the Rainy Day Fund, uh, I understand now because you voted against it, that the Rainy Day Fund is still intact? Okay, all right, yeah, um, and, uh, I've been told, although I, I have not found anything in the statute that actually, um, requires that it be funded through, uh, annual appropriations, uh, I strongly recommend that in the future, that there will be, there be revenues appropriated annually to the fund, uh, for a number of reasons. Uh, one of the primary reasons is that, um, as we go before standard and pores in the next, uh, month or so, uh, they're gonna be, uh, re-examining our financial condition and the steps we are undertaking, um, one of the top ten of the ten management characteristics of, um, highly credited, um, US public, um, organizations, of, of the to, of the ten, the top one on the list is the funding of a rainy day or a budget stabilization fund. It, uh, having that fund will, um, provide some comfort that there are, uh, during, uh, times of, uh, economic slowdown, or because Guam is, uh, highly susceptible to nat, natural disasters, and, uh, and, uh, and even world events, that, uh, we, we, um, uh, would set aside a, or a certain percentage of revenues annually to put into that fund to, uh, to perform the purposes that it was intended.
Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, um, I certainly understand the, um, the, um, concern expressed by Ms. Perez, there, there is a, a, uh, automa, automatic appropriation to eliminate our deficit, uh, there's the establishment of the Rainy Day Fund, and, uh, I do intend to present, just so that Ms. Perez, there's a sense of comfort here, um, when it's my turn to offer an amendment, I would offer an amendment to amend the Rainy Day Fund, to take the language for, uh, deposits and appropriations under two nine oh three, and insert that into the continuous appropriation language, because there is a continuous appropriation language right now in the Rainy Day Fund, uh, but it is only up to ten million dollars. In addition to special appropriations, there is hereby continuously appropriated to the Rainy Day Fund, the unencumbered balance of the general fund at the close of business on the last day of each fiscal year, commencing on September thirty, nineteen ninety-three, excluding any section thirty advance payments. The maximum amount of the Rainy Day Fund shall be ten million dollars, and no transfer of funds shall be necessary whenever the fund balance equals ten million dollars or more. Uh, so there is an existing appropriation, that's when I say there is existing appropriation, it's to the tune of ten million dollars, uh, but I will, uh, offer an amendment to update that language to reflect the, um, the language where the fluctuation can occur, and it would just mirror the appropriation language in this. So Lou, it'll remain a day, Rainy Day Fund, but, and we will have an appropriation up and above the ten million dollars, which, this is asking for about a twenty-five million dollar, uh, fund, uh, size of the fund, because it's one quarter of the operating, uh, budget, and if, if you're talking about four hundred, five hundred million dollars, you're looking at twenty-five, so it'll just update that ten million dollar number.
You're gonna update it to increase it?
To increase it.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so, so, um, when the time comes, I'll make an appropriate amendment. Thank you, uh, for that, uh, opportunity to, on that discussion.
Mr. Chairman, Calvo?
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, again, based on, on some of the conversations of the previous speaker, as well as discussions that were made earlier in the day, uh, it is obvious that we already have within the law, uh, the mechanisms for this, this reserve fund, call it Rainy Day Fund, or Stabilization Fund, uh, but I also acknowledge that, uh, that Wall Street, as well as the auditors, are looking at our, our government of Guam, and, and want to see, uh, the enactment of fiscal responsibility provisions in our current budget law, and so with that, I've thrown out an amendment, and the amendment more is to just, again, fortify the law that is currently on the books, but, but again, to just re-establish that, uh, or, or reiterate that, that law in the books, and, and again, this is something that, that would be, um, would be also shown as, uh, the legislature and the administrations, uh, um, motivation, uh, as, and I do know the governor, uh, will be meeting, and, and his fiscal policy team will be meeting with standard and pores, and maybe meeting with the auditors as well, that if we put this particular, um, amendment into the current budget law, it again, further, uh, re-fortifies or reiterates, uh, the position of this current legislative body and the administration. Again, it's just a very simple language, uh, that there will be, and I'll, I'll read it, it's an adding new section to chapter six, and it's on the Rainy Day Fund, twenty-two nine oh five of article nine of chapter twenty-two, uh, division two of five GCA is hereby amended to read, and it has, of course, the current language contained in twenty-two nine oh five, and then just the last line that is added, "The governor is hereby authorized to execute the provisions in this section pursuant to twenty-two nine oh three of this section." And that's my amendment.
Okay, does, everybody have a copy of the amendment, uh, offered by Senator Calvo? Okay, can I see a show of hands if you don't have it? Okay, this one, okay, wait. You know, yeah, the Rainy Day Fund, the governor is hereby authorized to execute the provision of this section, uh, is there any objection to the motion? Okay, since there's gonna be a, uh, huh? I'm sorry, huh? Yes, so, since there is an objection to the, you know, to, you wanted to discuss the motion, right? Okay, uh, we recess until about, hmm, one-thirty this afternoon? Okay, since it's already twelve o'clock, recess until one-thirty.
Well, we can go ahead and discuss the amendment, even though Lou's not here, and wait until she gets back. The amendment has been distributed, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this amendment by Senator Calvo? Adds a new section to chapter six, having to do with the Rainy Day Fund. Senator Espisho?
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I understand that, um, this amendment reiterates the importance of, "The governor is hereby authorized to execute the provisions of this section pursuant to subsection twenty-two nine oh three of this section," and in looking at, uh, subsection twenty-two nine oh three, it creates the, uh, purpose and expenditures of the Rainy Day Fund, and it says, "The Rainy Day Fund shall be expended by-" Day Fund, and it says, "The Rainy Day Fund shall be expended by appropriation by law for the following purpose, eliminating or reducing any general fund deficit existing at the end of a fiscal year substantially resulting from an unexpected substantial decline in revenues received or due to the general fund caused by a territorial agency. No monies can be transferred from the Rainy Day Fund by the governor pursuant to any of his transfer authority." Now, my question, Mr. Chairman, if the mover would yield, is there any problem in the current structure of this Rainy Day Fund which prevents the governor from executing the provisions of this fund?
Would Chairman Calvo yield?
Sure. Yeah, actually, no. The reason why I'm putting this particular language is, is obviously, when the language was put in by the administration in regards to the Stabilization Fund, again, the folks from the administration have been in discussions with their advisors, with Bank of America, as well as they're fully aware of some of the issues brought up by Standards and Poor's, and really what this all is a reiteration of current language in the law and applying it to Bill Number 74. So obviously, this has been in the books for years, it can occur, and hopefully that will occur, but with the placement in this particular language, in this particular bill, it will also share, it will show the sentiment of the legislature in regards to ensuring that at least when it comes to the spirit of a mandate in regards to the Rainy Day Fund, is that that spirit will carry through and that the provisions of the Rainy Day Fund will be implemented. But it could happen without it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As I understand it, Standard and Poor's is looking from our island government whether or not there are any sound fiscal policies in place that would lead them to believe that we're serious about averting any financial meltdown, and so I don't know if it's entirely necessary just to reiterate something and tell them that, oh, we're committed to addressing the financial crisis plaguing the island by restating that the governor is hereby authorized to execute the provisions of that section 22903. I don't think this is the kind of message we ought to be sending to Standard and Poor's, and I have an amendment right after this one, which would amend the unencumbered and balances of the General Fund and actually set aside revenue. So I don't support this amendment. I think it would send the wrong message to Standard and Poor's, and I'm not in the business of window dressing, Mr. Speaker. This amendment does not do anything to send any sound fiscal policies that Standard and Poor's is looking for to prevent any further downgrading of any of our bonds. Thank you.
Two things I want to praise the body of. I was incorrect. The motion to delete Section Six failed. It did not pass, according to the clerk. The creation of the Structural Stabilization Fund, so the Structural Stabilization Fund is currently intact in the bill. Secondarily, somebody whispered into my ear that Lou, who is on her way down here, is under the impression that the Rainy Day Fund no longer exists because of a, some kind of statutory scheme that eliminated unfunded funds.
Yeah. Yeah, just a point of information on that, it really still exists. The only funds that were closed were those funds that had balances in them, and then when they were transferred to the General Fund, according to the statute, they closed those accounts, but the other...
But this one did not.
But the other accounts were not affected.
So I think what we're going to do, if you don't mind, is we're going to move on to other subject matter until Lou gets here, so we can get this thing squared away and discuss it a little bit further. So we'll move on to some other amendments, then come back to Six when Lou is here. Does your amendment make sense in light of the fact that... All right, then let's vote on it. On the Calvo amendment, is there any objection? You want to talk about it some more?
My question, Mr. Speaker, is that if the Stabilization Fund is still intact, and then, I know the Rainy Day Fund was established way back when, during, I think, Speaker Snogestins, and would this be more, this is one and the same type of setup, isn't it? Yeah. And my point is that we have two types of fundings to stabilize, and one is rainy. What about the Sunshine Fund, too?
Senator Calvo, would you like to withdraw your amendment for now?
But no, I do, I do support the amendment as this, but the problem is that...
I understand. Well, the Structural Stabilization Fund is intact, that is in fact a fact that's there, all right? So that's not debatable, so, I mean, the speaker's point is well made, but what do you want to do?
Actually, we do already have current law, the establishment of the Rainy Day Fund.
So what do you want to do?
And we do realize that there's still a dormant account, because it was not, it was, that account should not have been zeroed out and killed, because there was no money there in the first place. So I see here, because of the, I thought the Stabilization Fund amendment had...
No, no, let's not keep discussing it. It's already established that it has not been deleted.
I think it's perfectly based on the current law, that this is, that the amendment that I placed is of no conflict.
All right, so on the motion by Senator Calvo, is there any objection? Senator Ruspichio said yes. All those in favor of the motion by Senator Calvo, please signify by raising your hand. It sounds to me like there is an insufficient number of votes, one, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, six, tinahungbotu, as they say. So the motion fails. Now we will wait until Ms. Perez arrives and to disport ourselves as best we can in the interim. Senator Wampat, you have an amendment for a new section dealing with fast-track teacher certification programs offered by the Yamashita Educator Corps. Would you like to move that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'd like to add a new section to Chapter Six to read, "Fast-track Teacher Certification Programs Offered by the Yamashita Educator Corps." What this basically would do, Mr. Chairman, is that the universities decided that they wanted to offer a fast-track within one year. These are individuals with a degree already who will go through the education courses. The thing is, is that we have several of the individuals there that have actually taught for many years, including military individuals as well, and I'm not lessening this at all. What it actually would call for is 10 years. They must show 10 years of documented and verifiable teaching experience that would be the equivalent, then, of doing the student teaching part of the Yamashita Educator Corps. These are all individuals that are currently working, currently employed, and they do all their classes on a Saturday, and this, although, and it's not going to mean that everybody's going to be waived at all, only those who have actually taught in any level of teaching. And usually by that time, after 10 years already, you would have gotten down pat the methodologies and strategies and techniques of teaching. So that's what this actually calls for.
On the Wampat amendment, is there any discussion? Speaker Mpinko, you're recognized.
This amendment, okay, would waive if the individual has 10 years of documented and verifiable teaching experience. My question is more or less generally, you know, in general, what's happening to many of the exemptions that we have given right now for retired teachers that are already certified, and we waive them to come back to work and double-dip, you know, with the government of Guam? I want to know that, because really, right now, there's an impact, and we are talking of trying to minimize any additional expense, but we have given a waiver for teachers right now to come back into the system, even though they may be retired, and there are a lot of teachers out there retired already. And so the question is, why aren't they coming back to the system? Would, let's say, graduating more students right now or, and teachers, yeah, I can see the teachers that are out for maybe a couple, three years, they may not be certified, because they have to take a continuing education, but those people right now do have the authority or the privilege of coming back to the system itself, because they are personally being waived.
Are you asking Senator Wampat to...
Perhaps she can enlighten me more than...
Okay. Senator Wampat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, this does not even talk about any of the educators who are retired. So those individuals, yes, can continue to come back into the system, and yes, they have to continue to take their continuing education courses or other courses to become certified. No one is being exempted at all from being certified. This amendment is not addressing that at all. What this is addressing is like, for example, let's take yourself, for example. You have a bachelor's degree, and you decided to apply to become a teacher. You go through the, every Saturday between February to the end of the year, you're taking classes every Saturday to become then, at the end of the year, a certified teacher. And however, let's say that you've actually taught for 10 years, but not in the public school system, you know, maybe, you know, a college or a university, and you, so then therefore, you then, what this is saying is that you don't have to do the student teaching for one semester. Well, but there's a different way they're doing this now because of the accelerated program, and what they're going to do is to make that an equivalency. Now, 10 years is a lot. Some people are arguing that you don't need 10 years, even if you teach one year, that's definitely far more than one semester, but there's a difference, however, in that particular case, because then we're looking at methodology, we're looking at strategies, we're looking at, you know, some of the methods that you've learned in the educational program. I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, I know I'm making that a little bit too long. Okay. Did I answer your question? But it would not prohibit anyone from coming back who has a retired educator, and it does not exempt anyone from being certified. Even these individuals in the YEC program, the accelerated program, have to then become certified, and to be certified as well, don't forget, you have to take Praxis One. All new teachers have to take Praxis One, and anyone coming into the system has to take Praxis One. And that's just the entrance exam, basically. It's not even Praxis Two that tests you on the pedagogy or the specific content area in which you have majored in.
Does that answer the question? Does anybody else wish to speak on this? Senator Pangolino?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I really believe the amendment, actually, I believe in a shorter amount of time, you know, and the way that I guess the program works, or the teaching certification works, is that you have to do as part of your four-year baccalaureate degree for a degree in education, that in order to be a certified teacher or to earn your degree, you have to have the student teaching and internship, and that's a one semester thing and so forth. And then you go out to the schools and you teach, you're a certified teacher, because you graduated with a degree in education or teaching. Now, you have somebody who has gone through a four-year degree, has an existing four-year degree, maybe even a master's degree, they need to then get the certification process in which you go through this fast-track program, and you get your teaching methodology, evaluation, and all that, but you have, and then you get your certification as a teacher. But then you're still, as part of that process, even though you've taught already for 10 years, I don't see why you can't exempt somebody who's been teaching for one year. That's really, teaching one full year is longer than the student internship and the teaching degree.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I would like to at least reduce the number to 10 years, to let's make it two, just ensure that you have at least a documented effort, but why require somebody who's already been teaching in the system, who's gone back and now gets the methodology coursework done, why do you want to have him do student teaching and internship, again? You know, so I would like to just reduce that to two years.
Senator Pangolino's motion? Is there any objection? Senator Wampat, do you have an objection to Senator Pangolino's motion? Okay, on the motion, no objection, the objection, I mean, the motion passes. On Senator Wampat's amendment as amended by Senator Pangolino, is there any objection? Without objection, the amendment passes. I understand Ms. Perez's return, so we will ask her to come in, and we will pick up the discussion on Section Six where we left it. Back, Section Six as it is written. One's done. I was wrong, it's still in the bill. No, the motion failed, so the... Sure. We are in session. We're not in recess.
Um, before lunch, I believe the, that particular section is still in the bill, right, Mr. Speaker? Okay. Yeah, and as I stated, I was asked to speak as to the importance of that fund being established and being funded, and it would certainly help in our meetings with Standard and Poor's later this month as we discuss the current credit watch over the government of Guam.
There was a question as well. There was a question as well about whether or not the Rainy Day Fund still exists. We seem, we're of the opinion it does.
I've, I don't have the language of the present budget law in front of me, but I've been, it's been explained to me that only those with balances were closed and then transferred to help fund some general fund appropriations this year. Those that did not have balances or activity remained intact on the books.
Okay, so we've clarified those two issues. Is there any other discussion on this section? Senator Calvo, then Senator Pangolino. Go ahead, Senator Pangolino. Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. You know, the, I guess the reason why we're doing this is to demonstrate a commitment to funding this Stabilization Fund. Yet, the, I don't see how in the language of the bill that there is any commitment at all, because if I read the bill, it says, "All revenues in excess of expenditures authorized through appropriations from the General Fund shall be deposited into the Stabilization Fund." Now, I don't know when the last time that happened, and the reason why we're here is because revenues are short of authorized expenditures and appropriations. So to say, you know, on one hand, for us to say that we need this because we're going to show a commitment to funding it, the language doesn't do that. It falls far short of that. As a matter of fact, the Rainy Day Fund is probably a better... As a matter of fact, the rainy day fund is probably a better program to demonstrate our commitment because there's at least an appropriation of $10 million, even though it was made back in 1993. And the language has, you know, a continuous appropriation language. The other thing, of course, and that really is the key. The other thing that really demonstrates a commitment far greater than this is the operation of existing law that the good chairman and speaker knows, that he had a hand in, is the requirement that 10% of our revenues go to fund the retirement of our deficit. And have we done that even at a 1% level? That would be a commitment. And, you know, we've had five, six years now of ample opportunity to demonstrate our commitment. We could have vetoed the budgets if we felt that appropriations exceeded revenues. We could have hung out blackmail budget one more time to demonstrate our commitment that our hands are being twisted. Yet, you know, we haven't done any of that. We only do it when we're under threat. And I think the only thing that we're going to demonstrate is that we provide for good times and bad times. In the good times, you know, we fund according to what we need to fund and prioritize, you know, greatly in that respect. And in lean times, we cut back. The budget that was being presented to us does not cut back. It is asking us to place more money into the budget in order to, so that we can continue to spend more money. I mean, a 2.5% cut, you know, is just not a demonstration of our commitment to bringing our government finances in line. So I just, you know, to say on one hand that this is going to cure us with regards to the demonstration of our commitment, and then to send down a budget that keeps the authorization level up way beyond the revenue level, as a matter of fact, it says, "Let us borrow money to keep operating the way we're operating." I mean, we're worse than having a forked tongue. We're, you know, it is, you know, forked tongue speaking. And I think we're not going to fool the people in Wall Street that we put in a stabilization fund and then we're going to borrow money so we can continue to spend the way we're spending. Either do one or the other, you know? Admit that we want to keep employment, you know, within the government stable, that we want to continue to not cut anybody's salaries, admit those things. And I think that'll go towards a longer, that will go way longer in demonstrating that what we say is what we're going to do. And to say, you know, that that's what we're going to do and this is going to prove it, it's just, to me, it's, we got to do, it's, we're sending two different messages distinct to Wall Street. One, we're going to borrow money to fund our operations in addition to, and so forth. And then on the other hand says, "We're going to act responsibly by putting in a stabilization fund." The two do not correspond to each other, or as the 60s say, "They don't jive."
Okay, actually, there's really not much point, further discussion here, given the fact that the motion to delete failed, the section is in there. Well, I'm kind of wondering what's the purpose of further questioning the section? I just don't see any purpose. There's no end to it. There's no, there's no motion at the end of it that's going to be resultant, so. The motion to delete has already been... No, there's no such thing as points of clarification.
Point of inquiry, then.
We're overdoing this, guys. Now we're just talking on the section.
But I can say, Mr. Speaker, that originally, and I wasn't looking backward, but originally, when the vote was, this, it was made note that the particular section was to be deleted. And then, of course, now after lunch, there's been a different count.
No, 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 no. The motion to delete failed. It did not receive sufficient votes. That's what happened.
That's not what was stated during the...
It doesn't matter what was stated, it matters what the clerk has on the record. She counted votes, the motion failed. So if you wish to make further motions, you may. I just don't see any purpose in continuously discussing Section 6 ad nauseam. I don't mind discussing motions that people want to make, but I don't see any reason for us to engage in an oversight hearing on Section 6. I think we've had more than a few oversight hearings already, so let's try and focus on moving things by motion, okay? And less just, you know, less of the other stuff.
Okay, just a point of inquiry, then, Mr. Speaker.
Surely.
What is the rule, then, of the game as far as the committee of the whole? I think Senator Calvo is trying to make a point of our motion for reconsideration.
No, he isn't. I mean, if he wants to make a motion for reconsideration, we can discuss.
Right, and we have done that already.
I don't mind doing that, I just don't want, Speaker, I just feel that we've had a sufficiency of discussion without motions. I think it's time for us to focus on, you know, we'll discuss things that we're actually moving on, that we're actually going to come to a vote on. But the motion to delete this has already failed. There's just not a whole lot of purpose discussing it unless someone wants to make a motion to reconsider that, which is kind of goofy in committee of the whole, but I'll entertain it if you want to, but...
So that rule, then, as far as the committee of the whole that we're talking, we're discussing right now, applies a point of reconsideration or...
We've done it before, so I'll do it again if someone wants to make the motion. But I just, I just don't want open-ended discussion on Section 6 anymore. I mean, it's already gotten to the point where there was a motion to delete it, the motion failed. So now we're going to talk about how it failed for the next hour? I mean, I just, I don't really see any purpose. Now, understand what I'm saying, Senator Respeja. I know you have some amendments here that have to deal with the rainy day fund. We'll get to it, that's fine. I'm just saying I don't want open-ended discussion on Section 6 anymore. It's just becoming kind of a waste.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
State your point of order.
Yeah, my point of order to help...
No, 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 no. A point of order is a statement that something is out of order, or you're making...
Yeah, so I'm...
So what's out of order?
Point of inquiry, then, Mr. Speaker, and I'm inquiring if it would be out of order to make a motion to just reconsider the actions of the previous action of Section 6.
I will permit that, as I said I would. Would you like to make a motion to reconsider the action of the body on Section 6?
Yes, I would, Mr. Speaker, since there seems to be...
On that motion, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
I'd like to talk about it.
No, 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 this is not just to talk about it.
Motion to reconsider.
All right. This is a reconsideration of the actions of the body on the motion to delete Section 6, which failed. So if you reconsider it, all right? No? All right, I want everybody to understand what they're voting for here, because I'm looking at some people looking at me like this. If this motion passes, then we are back to discussing a motion to delete Section 6, which was moved by, who was it again? By Senator Pangolino. We will go back to that point and discuss that motion again. We will not discuss it for five hours. We will discuss it in an orderly fashion and we will come to a vote, okay? Then we will vote. So, on the motion to reconsider, I need eight. Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis, siete, ocho, nueve, diez, once, dos, okay, we've got, I would say, an overwhelming majority of the body wishes to reconsider. So the motion passes, and after the gavel hits, we are on Senator Pangolino's motion to delete Section 6, okay? Now, Ben doesn't have to give another introductory speech.
Me neither.
No one has to reintroduce it. If you have something to say, raise your hand, okay? Senator Calvo, proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, as we go, and I'm glad to see Ms. Perez here, and maybe she can give some clarification. Remember, several weeks ago, when we saw that point of, the PowerPoint, and there was a cash flow report, and even though it was made mention that would be the revenue and expenditure, it was a cash flow report. As I look at Section 6, and you start with line seven, the purpose, "The structural stabilization fund is a cash fund," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then it goes to section 22, I mean, excuse me, line 22, 22902 creation, "There is hereby established in the treasury of Guam a structural stabilization fund." Hereafter refer to as the, this structural stabilization fund. Then it goes to line six and page 30, 22903, "Deposits and appropriations. All revenues in excess of expenditures authorized through appropriation from the general fund should be deposited in the SS fund." What I see contained in here, and maybe this is where I can get clarification, I see something where we're looking at some sort of a cash account, then at the same time, there's language based, you know, that budgetarily, you're talking about the establishment of this, with this fund. And with this fund, it is basically funded through an excess in revenues over expenditures. And obviously, there's a structural imbalance right off the bat since the earlier senator, and I don't need to reiterate what that earlier statements were, but there's an imbalance. But then, even with all of this, I see where I'm not too sure what we're looking at. Is this a, are we looking at actual cash and how cash moves through on an annual basis? Are we looking at the establishment of a fund and treating it as a fund? I have that question. And then, of course, my last question, obviously, for whatever the impact is in the end, what does the administration estimate will be deposited in this fund? But you understand why I'm a little bit confused.
You are correct, that the intent of creating this fund and the language, as you read, is really to establish cash in this rainy day fund, in this structural stabilization fund. I think in the rainy day fund, when that was created, it was for unencumbered balances or lapses, and that was supposed to have, you know, that was, it was maybe understood or maybe it was assumed that actual excess revenues would support those unencumbered balances or lapses in the past. But as our financial statements indicate, that in fact has not been the case. So the, where you see the term revenues in Section 22903, that because of the manner in which the general fund is, revenues are accounted for, which is primarily a cash basis, that is meant to mean cash also. So it is to, this particular section, starting with line seven or line six of 22903, is, it's, the, "All revenues in excess of actual expenditures is to be funded into this or deposited into this structural stabilization fund." And it was, yeah, it is, it was our hope that with the resubmission or with this Bill 74, with revenues actually, you know, materializing to the level now that we have requested, that if there are any surpluses ending this year with the additional revenues that we had originally put in the bill, then that would begin to fund, put some actual cash into this structural stabilization fund.
And obviously, you know, what occurred when Bill 74 was presented, again, we're fully aware of some of the imbalances with the original bill that was, what was presented to the legislature. And of course, there's been action further by the body, that, you know, obviously, there is that imbalance as well. So obvious, so it's the intention of the administration to place this particular provision there in the fiscal year '07, fully realizing that, you know, that this juncture, even based on the original language in Bill 74, there was not the necessary surpluses that were, would be evident to place actual cash in the fund. But at least, starting the creation of it, correct? I would...
That's correct.
Yeah. So would it be the intention there, then, on the FY08 budget that is going to be submitted, that this will be taken to account in that budget submittal?
Yes, Senator. I've looked at some of the states and how they've been funding this fund, and it's actually been a, actually, it's taken off the revenues, or it's a direct appropriation against revenues.
And that's probably what you're, what we hope, we're probably going to see. Ooh, boy. Okay. It'll be very fun. Okay. Thank you very much.
Senator Respeja?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm following the discussions and I support the motion to delete Section 6. And maybe in so doing, we could look at an opportunity that this legislature may have to understand what Governor Camacho needs when he goes to his meeting with us, Standard and Poor's. And I want to ask the DOA Director if it's possible that we can tweak the rainy day fund mechanism by which it was set up. And I have an amendment here, which I would introduce after we dispose of this motion, but I just want to start generating some discussion that if we, if we delete the unencumbered balance of the general fund at the close of the business, which is how the rainy day fund is set up, we know that unencumbered balances rarely amount to cash, especially if you don't have a surplus. And if we were to tweak that, to say that we earmark at least 2% of revenues projected each fiscal year, that those amounts and the actual cash would be deposited...
Senator Respeja, I'm familiar with what you're talking about. I see it in black and white next to me. I don't mind you discussing, you know, the salutatorious merit of your amendment when it is in fact being made, but...
No, I'd like, Mr. Speaker, to solicit some input from DOA.
Could you solicit, she will be here at the time your amendment is made.
Because I know, I know her concern, though, is that the, if you delete this fund, what then will be the next course of action?
I understand, I'm just saying that the discussion about your motion should be made when your motion is made, rather than, you know, take up time now on what is a motion by Senator Pangolino to delete the section.
So my question then to the DOA Director is if this motion passes, would you, would you see a possible remedy in amending the rainy day fund to put actual cash in there as opposed to the unencumbered balances? It's going to help me decide, Mr. Speaker.
Why don't I vote for the motion? Okay.
I support the motion. Your issue, Ms. Perez, is the cash, right?
Ms. Perez is a bit confused about the question. The motion that is currently before us, Lou, is to delete Section 6 in its entirety, okay? Which would completely eliminate the structural stabilization fund.
And that, and that...
And Senator Respeja is asking, if that motion were to pass and there were to be no structural stabilization fund, would it be useful to you and to the presentation before Standard and Poor's if we at a later point fashion some kind of amendment that would place money in the rainy day fund?
Correct, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
That's kind of a yes or no answer.
Yes, Senator Respeja.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Very well. Is there any further discussion on Senator Pangolino's motion to? Okay, Senator Pangolino?
Thank you very much. I guess, Lou, the reason why we wanted to make sure that cash got in there and you thought that the unencumbered balances, or the basically carry-forward lapses, is not a real funding source. But let me ask you this. How much of the carryover lapses that was authorized in public law, 28150, of the $25 million, that you have actually charged current operating expenses against that?
Reasonable question.
And use that up, that carryforward balance appropriation language to actually fund and convert it into actual cash for operating costs?
As Senator Pangolino, obviously, authorizations funds were loaded based on those carryover lapses that allowed those 22 agencies to continue to operate this far into... into the fiscal year, which, um, brings us to this point of having a serious crisis, which helps, which only aggravates our situation.
Right. But we did actually fund.
Through authorization.
Through authorization, fund up current real operating costs with these unencumbered balances.
That's correct.
So if the governor wanted to, if he's really committed to financial integrity, he could take the unencumbered balances and put it into the rainy day fund and have some real money in there. Could he not? The same way he funded current operating costs?
Absolutely.
Could he?
Yes.
Just, uh, just as, uh, we are operating without adequate revenues, we've, we've only incurred a whole lot of, um, uh, payables and obligations.
It wouldn't be the most responsible way of doing it, but he could. Could he?
I, you, you could load, um, uh, unencumbered balances, but, um, there'll be no cash to support it.
So what cash did we use to, to pay the loaded unencumbered balances for the operations? He converted that unencumbered balances into real cash to pay the paychecks and some vendors, did he not?
No.
In other words, he just borrowed the current cash from this year's cash flow and charged it against the appropriation and the authorization he received. So he could, if he wanted to, fund the rainy day fund, much the same way that he funded current operating costs from those unencumbered balances from the previous year. Lou, you're trying to say yes. You got you. I say yes, you're just gonna wait around. I. Cash is, capital cash is part of the decision. I, I, I'm done with my question.
All right. Speaker Forbes?
Well, I'll make the point more clearly, because this has always been a kind of a sore point for me, too. Senator Pangolino's point is well taken. First off, the blanket statement that all lapses are unfunded is inaccurate. Some lapses are funded. I know that, because the legislature's lapse was funded, and thank God it was, because if it hadn't been for the funding of the legislature's lapse, the legislature would have had to shut down at a couple of points this fiscal year because of the shortage of cash releases to us. Uh, so that very clearly is the case with some lapses. Uh, and I know for a fact that certain appropriations, very specific appropriations, like we heard from Public Safety, the Cadet Program and several other of those are paid out of prior year funds, uh, that, that have lapsed, uh, and, and, and that is the funding source for the cadets, and the cadets are being paid, and, and the cadets do exist. The point that, um, that an authorization to spend, which is what an appropriation is, can be used to fund the rainy day fund or anything else, is exceedingly well taken. It becomes, when you have a shortage of cash to fund all those appropriations, a matter of will. Will you put cash behind this appropriation, or will you put cash behind that appropriation? And it becomes a series of choices, and those choices, in fact, constitute precisely what cash management is all about. It's all about a series of choices. And I only raise this because occasionally, there are some statements that make it sound far less arbitrary and far more dictated, uh, by, for lack of a better term, outside decision-making. And, you know, all of us who have been, in any circumstance, uh, responsible for making those kinds of decisions in our own smaller universes know precisely what that means. Uh, you know, right now, here in the Guam Legislature, there are senators that have budgets and they're, you know, requesting POs against those budgets. And, you know, you'll probably wonder why some of your POs have been very slow in coming back to you. And they've been coming back to you slowly, because until we know for sure that the legislature's gonna receive the cash that, uh, it's supposed to receive, we're slowing down the expenditures. And we're trying to, you know, deliberately slow down the race, uh, the, 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 uh, the rate of payment. So I'm just trying to make a point that, that, um, that Senator Pangolino did have a point there to say that it's impossible, uh, to, to, to fund the rainy day fund in the fashion he described is not entirely accurate. It's all a question of deciding which you want to fund first. And I'm not criticizing, uh, Ms. Perez or anybody else for making some of the decisions they've made in terms of priorities. They're very understandable, but, uh, we just need to understand that, uh, that these are still choices, and choices can be exercised in a multitude of ways, and they aren't necessarily all the same. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call for the question.
Uh, there's been a call for the question on the motion to delete, uh, section six, I believe, by Senator Pangolino. On the issue, if there are no objections? Section C is now deleted. Section six, that is, is now deleted. All right, we're on now to.
Okay, I guess what was intact is now not intact. Don't know what we're doing sometimes. But, okay, uh, so that, that section is now, uh, is now deleted. We have, uh, a multitude of directors and staff in various and sundry departments and agencies who are here, I believe, to discuss fee increases and things of that nature. Rather than have them sit out there for, uh, another three or four hours and not do much of anything, as I informed some of you during the, uh, during the discussion on the previous motion, I'd like to ask them all to come in. I believe, uh, John and the departments, and Lou will stay here, too, because I'm sure there'll be some questions that'll come to her, uh, would like to make some proposals for fee increases. I know there are some senators who are also looking at similar amendments, so could I ask the Sergeant at Arms to please bring them in? And if we have an insufficiency of chairs, without going into recess, let's get some more chairs here so that folks can, uh, can all sit down. That's a good way to go. John, do you have, uh, do you have a handout for rev and tax, if that's where you want to start? Do we have a handout for rev and tax? Do you guys have a handout for, uh? Do you guys have a handout of some sort, so we can distribute it to the senators? Still be easier if we could see something in writing, obviously. Guys, we're not in, uh, I just want to point out, we're not in recess. We're still on. Guys are looking good up there. Bring in more chairs. While we're waiting for the chairs to be put up, uh, does the Department of Revenue Taxation have something to hand out to the senators that'll illustrate these fee increases that you'd like to make?
Oh, before we do that, Mr. Speaker, um, I think a matter of order here is, uh, we do have the communication from the governor regarding a floor amendment, right? That has to do with.
I just want to be certain that what they say is the same as what's there, Mr. Speaker, since there's been occasion where it hasn't been. That's all.
So, uh, the discussion that we're, because before we start the discussion, we need to have something that we could hang her hat on.
Right.
Uh, so are we more or less trying to accept a motion, to accept what the gov, the governor has?
No, we're gonna begin by just having the departments and agencies with John make a pitch, and then we'll see if anybody's interested in entertaining making such a motion on behalf of the administration.
Yes, but structurally speaking, where are you gonna be putting then the amendment? Uh, on the bill that we have right now?
On chapter six, as a new, uh, new section.
No, it's not. This, this, the way that it's being presented, Mr. Speaker, um, it is like a floor amendment as presented to you by the.
I recognize that, Mr. Speaker, but I don't know that there's any member that wishes to move the entirety of the governor's proposal. I haven't heard.
All I'm saying, Mr. Speaker, is that before we start discussion in terms of the fees, w, w, you know, in terms of what the governor gave us, do we go then on section by section of what he presented to us, or will be jumping all over the place as far as the fees are concerned?
Well, let's ask John. John, uh, the speaker's question is, and it's a, it's a valid one, is, uh, are you guys going, here's, here's the situation. You, you've sent to the leg, you've sent to the legislature a proposed floor amendment that combines all of these fee increases. I don't know there's any member that I'm aware of who's willing to move the entirety of your package as a single amendment. So, um, it may behoove you to speak to it on a department-by-department basis. Now, would you like to do it in the order that was contained in the governor's, uh, transmittal?
Sure. I mean, we're open to whatever the body, however the body wants to address it.
Well, actually, we want to know how you want it.
We're ready, we're ready to speak to it on an agency-by-agency level, if that's.
Okay. Which is the first in the governor's transmittal? All right, then we'll begin with rev and tax. Is that, is that satisfactory to everyone?
Oh, uh, Mr. Speaker, I'd still call for a point of order here.
Certainly.
Before we, we actually discuss the first part of, of the governor's presentation, some type of a motion would have to be made.
Well, anybody who wants to move the entirety of the governor's fee package as a motion is perfectly welcome to do it. I certainly have no intention of doing so, so. Senator Palacios?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, if I can count correctly, probably, I have already introduced so far 17 bills reference to what was bill 199, and they were so lining up to be heard. Uh, I would not hesitate to introduce this, put my name on it, and for purpose of discussion. Because about 75% of what is contained here is, is already introduced on separate bills.
All right, if Senator Palacios wishes to take the entirety of the governor's proposal and move it as an amendment on the floor.
To include the fire department, because the fire department, I introduced actually a separate bill myself.
Senator, Senator, Senator. The motion?
The mo, the motion then, Mr. Speaker, is, just as a matter of clarification, that the, the, the motion that was made by Senator Palacios then is to, to more or less substitute what we already got on chapter six to a new chapter six, right? So that we can go.
No.
Uh, section by section or page by page, or what?
No, as a new section, the entirety as a new section.
You know, I'm, I'm confused, because.
No, no, Mr. Speaker, there are other things in chapter six besides the fee schedule. We're not substituting all those things away. There's not a whole lot left, because we've, we've, yeah, but, but the point here is that this is, just like if any member here, Mr. Speaker, wished to propose, uh, a fee increase on their own, they could, and it would be an added section to chapter six.
Yes, and, and.
I know the way it's written. I, I don't know why it was written that way. We didn't write it. The front office wrote it that way. I am somewhat confused.
See, the instruction here takes precedent for anything else.
Well, not necessarily.
It's a new chapter six is hereby added, and also.
Senator Palacios, you're making the motion. Would you like to, instead of adding it as a substitute, would you like to take the body of the governor's, uh, proposal and move it as a new section?
As a new section, yes.
I will accept that motion. Senator Palacios?
I move that, I move that it be a new section.
Okay, then we will discuss, we will discuss it on that basis. Senator Palacios is moving it as a new section. And what he's doing is he's, uh, he's moving the, uh, the, um, anyway, uh, he's gonna move it as a new section, and we'll entertain it as a new section. Any references to the amendment as is transmitted by the governor that talk about substitution shall be, uh, deleted by the legislative council, and the language will be put in such form that it represents a new section to chapter six. Okay? Is that a problem?
Correct, correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is that, is that a problem for anybody? All right. So let's move ahead on that basis. Senator Palacios, would you like, since it is your motion, to ask, uh, either John or the Department of Rev and Tax to speak on the fees that they'd like to increase?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman, perhaps, uh, maybe starting with the Director of Revenue and Taxation, uh, to explain, of course, the, the history, be, you know, behind, of course, formulating, uh, this bill and com, and arriving at, at these recommendations, uh, for information purpose. Uh, this was introduced, uh, last term as bill 199. It, it, it had a public hearing, and so those things have been taken into consideration, and here we are again going through it. Uh, hopefully, uh, the director, it all depends on the, the staff of Department of Revenue and Taxation, and other staff who are relevant to, uh, to some of these, uh, bills that perhaps provide an explanation and background as to the, why do we arrive, why do you arrive at this, uh, new fee schedule? Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Loughlin?
Thank you very much. Today I have with me, to my, uh, my, uh, far left is Joe Reyes, he's the Deputy Tax Commissioner. To his right, to my left is, uh, Veronica Kwan, she's the tax, um, what's your title book? Tax, uh, Technical Research and Appeals Administrator. Frank Bloss, who's, uh, uh, the acting, um, administrator for motor vehicle. John Carlos, who's the administrator for insurance and banking. Myself, and John Camacho. We come before you today to look at the fees that, some of these fees were implemented back in, uh, I believe, 1995. It went through the process, uh, and then it was repealed. So we're, we're here again to, to ask, uh, to review these fees, because we feel that they are, um, below, if not the cost, the national standards of, uh, of fees. A lot of these fees, um, were looked at not only for the cost, but the enforcement side. Um, I just spoke to Captain Paul Suba today, and we expect to enforce a lot of the laws, and it requires a lot of, um, personal time, um, programs that are not, uh, that we don't have today. Um, with, uh, I don't know how you want to start. You want to start with the motor vehicle side or the insurance side? Maybe we should start with the, uh, insurance and banking and the fees that, uh, John Carlos and, and the department has, uh, has, has worked on. Okay, what's, what's?
So, um, as a matter of order, let's go ahead and, uh, Mr. Loughlin, go ahead and follow the proposal that was submitted by the governor, so that we can follow, um, the document that was presented to us.
Okay, uh, I guess section 1112 of the bill, ta, income tax and service fees. Um, I have Veronica Kwan.
Art, before, before we go to, to, uh, section two.
Senator Big.
On section one, you, you are, uh, asking that the, whatever similar charges, charged by the Secretary of the Treasury for Services and Administration of the IRS, uh, when such fee is not adjudicated, adjudicated and implemented by Guam law or regulation, the Director of Revenue and Taxation shall apply such fees where applicable in executing the Internal Revenue Code. Can you give us an example of that?
Um, there are fees charged by the code, the, um, uh, Internal Revenue Code that we mirror. Those fees are set by the federal government, so we just follow those, those fees. Take Ferguson. Take, for example, the...if you're trying to get an exemption, or you apply for an exemption for nonprofits, Form 1023, I believe, that form, there's fees that IRS charges that we follow. Set by...these are set by Congress, so we follow the fees.
So, right now, you're not following...even though we're mirroring, we have, we're taxing, obviously, we mirror the tax, US tax, right?
Right.
The federal tax. We only do it as far as the tax portion, but not with any fees that are being administered by the Treasury Department, right?
There are some local fees for GRT. GRT is a local law that we set through our local legislation.
Okay. So, that part would have to be enacted by local law, but...
Right. Local laws we enact with the legislature. Federal laws, we are enacted by federal statutes.
But are they...how much are they? You know, because some of them are really so high.
Are you talking about the federal fees?
Yes, uh-huh. Other than what you have already in front of us. This one is some ideas to...
An example is like a copy of a tax return. If you now charge thirty-nine dollars, that's set by federal statute. If you apply for a nonprofit, it's less than twenty-five thousand, then it's... Two hundred fifty, if it's more, then it's seven hundred. That's set by Congress. We can't touch that, yeah.
What do you do now, since it's being set by Congress, as far as fees?
We follow what Congress says.
So, you're doing it now, then?
Yes, we are. But these are fees that, like, for the local laws, not the federal laws.
Okay, my question then is only for the federal part. I'm not talking about what is being addressed here. So, all I'm asking is, give me sort of an example as to what is the federal statute right now regarding some fees and the costs of it?
A copy of your tax return.
How much would that be?
Thirty-nine dollars.
And that's the same as the...
As the federal, yes, uh-huh.
So, okay, so you're doing it now, then?
Yeah, we are following what the federal regulation says, yes.
Okay, so, what I'm saying then is that you don't need Section 1, right? Or you just wanted to reinforce it?
Right, right, uh-huh.
Okay, I see.
Just want to reinforce it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Logan.
Thank you. Senator Pangolino?
I'd just like to follow that line of questioning, and to make sure that I understand. It says, the change in the law, what you want to add, as you say, the Department of Revenue and Tax and the execution of Guam's tax laws, so that would be the GRT tax law, basically, maybe the use tax, which is the GRT tax. I'm not sure of any other taxes that Guam imposes, other than fees. May implement fees substantially similar to fees charged by the Secretary of the Treasury for Services in the Administration of the Internal Revenue Code, when such fee is not adjudicated or implemented by Guam law or regulation, the director may apply such fees where applicable in executing the Internal Revenue Code and the laws of Guam. Are you saying that if, for example, I want a copy of my GRT form, which is a local law, then you want to be able to charge me what it would cost for me to get a copy of my income tax return? Or some other...I don't know how you would compare the two in terms of either cost or structure. So, I'm a little...I'm still unclear as to the necessity of Section 1. When you say that, for example, because they are Guam's tax laws, are you referring to also the Internal Revenue Code as applicable to Guam? Or are you referring to just local taxes imposed by Guam law?
It's not to impose the federal statutes on local law.
Okay.
I believe this section is just stating that when we, when the IRS or the federal government does set a fee, we follow the fee for the Internal Revenue Code.
But you have no choice?
Right, it's not a choice.
So, why do you need this if there's no choice? I mean, it's automatically applicable.
Right.
Right, so this is...and the reason why I'm asking that, because you have here in the execution of Guam tax laws, which may be more encompassing than the federal code. So, you may now say that for something having to do with GRT or with use tax, if you wanted to impose a fee to that, you might just have an automatic authority to kind of compare to the same kind of report on the IRS code and impose a fee on that. And that's, I don't think that's your intent.
No, that's not my intention.
As you clearly say, your intent is that when the IRS code, as applicable to Guam, sets a fee for a service or a document under the IRS code, then that fee structure is applicable to Guam. And the fact that we mirror the system, and you're the tax administrator of the Guam Income Tax Code, which is a mirror of the federal tax code, means that you have no choice but to implement those fees. So, this is kind of superfluous, but I see the danger in allowing you to add other fees without adjudicating them as relevant to Guam laws. If we, for example, instituted a income tax surcharge, then you would tell, those same fees would be applicable, you could make them applicable to the income tax surcharge. And I just don't know that this is necessary, and as such, I'm gonna make a motion, failure to understand exactly what it is, and the fact that is not as clear to me. I would just move to delete the underlined section of Section 1, which amounts 111104.
So, then at effect of that would be to restore, so might as well just be the deletion of Section 1. Is that correct?
No, because you'd still want 1104, the functions of the income tax code.
I understand, but if you remove the underlined section, was the additive language, then the existing language would continue as it is, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, is your motion to strike Section 1?
My motion is to...yeah, I guess.
All right. Senator Wantan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. You had indicated that because this was passed by the federal government, and many times Congress will pass legislations, but then would require that each jurisdiction then must create their own legislation and pass it. They're not necessarily mandated automatically, no matter what is stated in each local jurisdiction. Is this then what you're requesting for? That this body then actually pass legislation to mirror that or to reflect that of the federal government? That's one question. And the second question is that can you then, on your own, implement then these fees as imposed by the federal government without this particular section?
I believe what we wanted to do is just reemphasize that the fees that IRS has implemented are the fees that we are following. It's just, I guess, making a statement in the law. The fees, as they have been implemented, passed by Congress, have been implemented by the Department of Revenue Tax.
Do you have anything in writing, when Congress had passed this, that each local jurisdiction must do the same?
It's the Organic Act. We're just following the Organic Act that says...
No, but I mean, because now, like, for example, Ms. Kwan mentioned that there are new fees, like, for example, to get a copy of your income tax return. I know in nineteen ninety-five, I mean, nineteen fifty, it wasn't thirty-nine dollars. So, today, it's thirty-nine dollars. So, that's my question, then, is that from here until whenever, whenever Congress increases their fees, is it automatic that each local jurisdiction then will follow that same fee Or do you have to come here?
The Congress issues it as a revenue ruling and a revenue procedure. So, because we mirror the tax law, we have to follow it.
So, if I'm understanding you all correctly now, is that because Congress now has, and the federal government, it's thirty-nine dollars for a copy of their income tax return. So, we want to make sure that then in Guam, if we're going to ask for a copy of our income tax, that it will also be thirty-nine dollars.
Yes, we do that.
But it doesn't have to be thirty-nine dollars. It could be fifteen dollars here.
I don't think so. We follow whatever the Congress mandates as the fee. In other words, it's controlled by Congress. If there's a change in the law, we follow the law on any changes.
Maybe I'm not making myself real clear. Let me try it again. Now, many times, okay, Congress will pass a law, and it's a general law, basically, and whatever we pass, we cannot pass anything that will conflict with it. So, here now, we're saying that, suppose we're saying that we want to increase the copy to be forty-five dollars. Now, that's gonna be contrary to what the federal law mandates, right? However, we could stay within that range, anywhere from one dollar to thirty-nine dollars, except when we pass this particular section that would say now it will be thirty-nine, because that's the way it is at the federal level. Am I correct, Ms. Kwan?
You know, we mirror the tax law. We mirror the federal income tax law, so we have to follow what they say. We have to follow all the revenue rulings and all the revenue procedure.
Okay.
If you want, we can delink. I mean, if you want to do that, then you delink.
Okay, so let's say then we asked, we voted for the amendment to delete. Would that prevent revenue tax from charging now thirty-nine dollars for a copy of a person's income tax return?
No, if you delink, then you, we're writing our own laws.
No, not delink. Just, we're not going to pass Section 1.
I believe the internal section wants us to acknowledge that there's a fee out there from the Guam territorial income tax structure. In the past, we haven't been charging these fees. I think the fees were just put in place four, five years ago, and we want something in writing that we will follow the fees for the Internal Revenue Code.
So, what is the impact to you? What would it do if we do not include this underscored section? What can you not do or do?
It's already written in federal law that says we have to follow that law.
Okay.
And that's through the Organic Act.
So, in essence, then, you're right. So, the previous then senator basically said that if we delete this, then it wouldn't prohibit you from implementing and mirroring what is in the federal law.
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, on the motion, Senator Calvo?
That answered my question. Obviously, this thing goes, everything still remains the same. Thank you.
On the motion, without objection. Motion carries. Section 1 is now deleted. Section 2?
Section 2, please.
Just a point of inquiry, maybe just for better clarification. We have a bill that was transmitted by the governor's office, and just as, maybe a minute or two ago, we had received another set, and I think this is from the Department of Revenue and Tax. So, just for record purposes, I just wanna know which documentation to work off of. Are we gonna work with the governor's proposal down that was sent to us, or what was just received by the body?
The body is acting on amendment by Senator Palacios, is the voluminous document. It's consisting of...just a second.
With the cover letter dated April 13th.
With attachments, including...wait a minute, I gotta go to the last page here.
I'm sorry, that's confusion. Maybe what Frank Bloss...
Seventy-five pages. And then, I believe attached...
Yeah, that's not, that's just our record. It's not a submission of a bill.
Okay, so it's just for record purposes, FYI?
Right.
Just wanna make sure that clarification is stated, Mr. Chair.
Yes, we're working from the document that everybody should have, which has a blank at the top, and starts off, Chapter 6, Amendment to Certain Fees, Charges and Penalties of the Government of Guam. If anybody's operating from anything other than that, then you need to change over. All right.
Thank you.
Joe?
You know, I don't have a copy of the bill. Just a second. That's the income tax and processing branch of the Department of Revenue and Tax that's authorized to charge services fees as follows. One for each page, a dollar.
We have a copy of the document. We need, I guess, the director was asking for you to articulate exactly the rationale behind the charges and changes, et cetera.
So, I guess, you know, we never charged fees for these before, and now we wanna charge fees for, you know, stuff like duplicate tax returns, local tax returns, notices to taxpayers, we'd like to charge them for that, stuff like that.
Part of the reason why we looked at these fees is it takes time and effort from our employees to stop what they're doing when somebody requests either duplication of copies of W1s. W1s are the withholding returns that are filed with the quarterly withholding, I believe, that are filed by the employers to the employees. Those are, because our records are not, are kept the way our income tax is, it's not recorded immediately as we receive them, it's put in a pile until we get somebody to key that information in. So, if somebody files a return and is asking for a return, somebody has to get off their chair from either processing a return, or looking at, or assisting a taxpayer in the window to come out to the back, go one by one, pull out these returns. It's kind of expensive for us to pay somebody that fee or that wage for him to, or her to sit down, go one by one through the W1s, look for this taxpayer, make copies, and then put it back. It's not controlled. So, we're getting, we're trying to get there where we allow taxpayers to do it online, but right now, not everybody's doing it, so it's time-consuming and it's costly to the government. So, all these fees have not been charged in the past, so what we're asking is looking at these fee, which is very nominal, just to cover even the cost of the Xerox paper, the Xerox machine, and the cost of employees pulling out the returns.
Okay, on Section 2. Senator Pangolino?
You know, I'm just trying to kind of understand the...these fees are, these have never been charged before.
Right.
Right. So, are you telling me that, I guess, because now we're gonna go on a fee basis, are we gonna reduce your appropriation now? Because right now, we're paying you to do this out of the general tax and your appropriation. That's the thing, you know, I understand the need to do some fees and so forth, but I mean, it's, if this is part of your job, and the appropriation that's given to you is sufficient to do your job, then you wanna add another fee on top of the cost of the taxes that we're adding in order for you to do what your normal function is? I mean, that's just the whole theory, I guess, behind these things. Because if we are in fact gonna go to a fee-based structure, we're gonna charge you what it costs us to do that, then somewhere along the line, we're adding an additional burden on the con... burden on the consumer, and somewhere along the line, we've got to then take off some of the burden on the tax side, because right now, he's paying that through the taxes he pays. So we just have to balance that, and I just want to make sure that these are reasonable. And for, is the reason why we're, one is five dollars and one is three dollars? What's, one is, because there's a copying, there's a copying charge, so I'm assuming you're going to now charge him a copying charge on top of that, or no?
Can you repeat that?
If I ask for a W1 duplication fee, it's going to cost me five dollars. Is there a copying charge on top of that?
That's the fee that we're charging, the five.
It's a form.
Right, right.
So you're going to give me a form?
Right.
Now, if a certification to a taxpayer, is that a form?
It's a form letter. It's just a certification, a taxpayer did file a return with us.
Yeah, what's the difference in the, in the cost between the W2 duplication fee and the certification form letter? Isn't it kind of the same?
Certification, when you do research, see if a taxpayer filed a return, it's easier to find than the withholding. Withholding, again, it's not...
It's easier to find than the W1?
No, the 1040, let's say you want to file...
No, 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 the W1, the duplication fee.
The W1 is kind of, it's a little bit harder.
It's harder to find. Two bucks harder.
Right, something. It's a little, it's a little longer to locate a W1.
Yeah, I just want to know that there is a rationale for the difference in price, because you're both generating, you know, something out of the same department, right? So...
I understand where you're coming. It's just the time and effort to pull out a withholding tax is a little bit more difficult than trying to pull out a 1040.
Yeah, and the certification letter, you don't have to do any research.
Right. The certification, we do have to look for the return. If it's not in the system, we do have to, like, go one by one. If the taxpayer gives us a date for his filing and it's not captured in the system, we have to go to that date one by one and look at each return to see if he did file or not.
Okay, and you have all your Form F-500 on the system, so it's easier to find than the W1?
Right, Form 500 is the payment you make on your withholding, so that's cash. So we can tell if you paid...
You got all your receipts easier?
Yeah.
Your receipts are easier to...
Right.
Okay, thank you.
On Section 2. All right, Section 3.
We are requesting that the fees for weights and measure, that's, for example, if I go to a mom and pop store, there's a scale there for weighing vegetables, fruits, or whatever. Currently, the fee, currently the fee to inspect that weight measure is just two dollars. So if my inspectors go in pairs, so when they go to a mom and pop store, that barely covers the cost. So what they do is, they try to, in a certain locality, target maybe like ten mom and pop stores, and then do the inspection so that they all are able to do the inspection in a certain area. So basically, that's the rationale. It's mostly to cover, hardly to cover the cost.
Any questions?
These fees, again, just for me, reemphasize, these fees have not been looked at for several years. Our cost per employee has increased over the years, and we're just trying to cover the cost of employees going out inspecting the scales to cover the cost so that it's, we're not, I guess, what we're trying to do is enforce the law and charge the right fee that it costs the government to inspect that, the scales.
Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I guess, a remark to the staff of revenue and taxation. I understand there are two central themes in this fee adjustment, and number one, of course, is to increase the recovery rate of what it costs right now to provide the service, such as an example of the scale, checking the scale at mom and pop, and you charge only two dollars, and actually, the hourly rate of that individual probably is sixteen or twelve dollars an hour. So this would, and this is my understanding, of course, and I want, I guess, a confirmation, that number one is, of course, to increase the rate of recovery of the cost that it takes to provide the service. And number two, by increasing the recovery rate, of course, it will enable the department, the fire department, the revenue and taxation, the police department, it will enable the department to maintain the service, provide a better service, because now you have this sort of like revolving funds at an increased rate, and then maybe strengthen the service and produce more of that kind of service, which is actually geared toward providing a more satisfactory service to the people that are receiving the service. And I think those are the two central points in the adjustment of these fees. The recovery rate is to be increased upwards to strengthen, to continue to strengthen the department that's providing that service. And if I'm, if you can add to that remark, Mr. Director of Revenue and Tax, I'll appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Senator Palacios. What we've, what we were looking at is these fees that have never been looked at in the past, that not only for the cost, but the enforcement of these laws that are out there right now, for the money we charge, we're just, you know, barely processing taxpayers as they come in, not really enforcing. Take, for example, the ABC laws that are, that require us to inspect the bars. I mean, we have four or five employees, and one of them is retiring in the near future, and with the workload that is in the office, it's kind of very difficult to enforce the other section of the laws that says, you know, if they violate a certain law for a bar operating after two o'clock, I have to send somebody out there after two o'clock to look at the bars that are open. But if they're in the office processing new, taxpayers asking for licenses, it's very, very difficult to enforce the laws.
All right. No other sections? Senator Pangalina on Section 3?
Thank you very much. None of these, as written and as offered, none of these really fees remain with the department, is that correct? They're all paid over to the general fund?
That's correct.
So it's entirely conceivable that we may raise all these fees and you may not get any additional money?
That's correct.
And you could not be more efficient, and you could not provide better service?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the other question I have is that, is there a huge difference in the, in the test and the time it takes to test a scale, the one that measures two hundred pounds and one that measures a thousand pounds? Is there, is there a huge difference in time and cost associated with it? Not that there's any huge difference in the, in the cost that's being charged, but there must be a rationale. I mean, if it takes the same person testing a two-pound scale or five-pound scale, he drives in the same car, we pay him the same salary, when he's going to test the five-pound scale and a twenty-one, a thousand-pound scale, it's all the same, correct? Or am I wrong?
You are correct, Senator. There's a minimal difference. You are correct.
So we really have no rationale?
Between the fees, I think...
Between the fees.
Was that the fees, John, that was there before? Is that the way they set up the fees? By weights?
Yes.
Right, right, we were just trying to follow what was...
I know, but, you know, it's...
The only thing, sir, maybe, is the people that have to wait, fix the two-hundred-pound scale has to be big and muscular and...
Like me.
The two pounds, like, probably me.
Yes, sir.
So there really is no...
There's more effort if you, if you measure something which is way heavier than the other one.
Yeah, so, other than the guy who has a two-hundred-pound scale probably makes more money, but, you know, we hit him on the other side of the tax. I just want to know that there's some rationale to this, and if there is no difference in the service being provided, or the scale required, or the gas he's driving, you know, one uses a V8, the other one uses a Sentrac to drive, so we charge him less because he burns less gas, okay? But if there, if there is no real difference, I just want to know that you recognize that and you still want to charge a bigger price for, or the Governor wants to charge a bigger price to the bigger guy?
Right, that's, that's what we were just following, the old, the old law, and just adjusting the old law.
Okay, all right.
All right, Section 4.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make some comment. Well, isn't there a similarity, though, in terms of, like, back in the States where they have a scale on the side of the freeway where, you know, all trucks are being weighed? Is that, and with the rationale here of the fees being high would be applicable, or is it just because they want it, there is a regulation in terms of weight for the trucks?
Sir, the weighing measures that are available in the States on the highway are under the motor carrier. So we have similar, I believe, weighing measures that are now being done by our motor carrier division.
Yes, but is there any other reason as to why you're charging a lot more for, like, what the previous speakers mentioned, you know, a car versus a truck? Is it because of the wear and tear of the truck, or is it because it's too heavy for, you know, the taxpayer has to pay for the road? And that's why that is, it has, you know, there is a graduation of the fees, that it's, the more, that, you know, a truck that weighs five hundred pounds or one hundred to, what's this, manufacturing...
Ten thousand pounds.
Yeah. One to thirty pounds, what type of vehicle is that? Like a bicycle?
These are the measures that, that we use when, for example, we go to Payless. There's a scale there where you could put your purchases for vegetables, and so they will be weighed there. Once in a while, we, or if you buy potatoes...
Yeah.
That's the, you put the potatoes and then they weigh, and that, those are the types of weights and measures that are being inspected. Although there are some stores that are...
So, so you're just going in terms of the weight that the manufacturer placed on that vehicle that you're buying then, when you're charging the fees, right?
Ah, sir, these are not being used on any vehicle at all.
Huh? I'm sorry.
This has nothing to do with vehicles, sir. These are just weights and measures for your purchases of daily needs and commodities, foods mostly.
Senator Onepan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, now that that's clarified, I guess, for many of us here, but when we're looking at these costs, some of the things that, you know, you would normally think would should be factored in would be the wear and tear to the equipment, or any, anything else, basically, that somewhere down the line would be impacted, and that's why there is the need for this increase. Or maybe how much would it take in terms of trying to, when you're checking for the accuracy of the calibration of any one of these meters or scales? You know, how much does that entail? Some might feel like there's more to this, but we're just not somehow hearing exactly what it is, because you're saying for one thing that there's no difference from zero one to ten thousand, you know, pounds, when, I'm sure there must be something that makes it a little bit more different. And then when you go and measure things that are dry versus others that are liquid, you know, I know we're concentrating so much on those other things, but there are other things listed here, and I'm just trying to figure out, not knowing specifically what your inspectors would do when they go out, that can demonstrate, you know, the type of work that goes into this that warrants, you know, the dollar charge. Can you elaborate, or anybody else can elaborate a little bit more?
There is, there is a difference in calibrating a machine that weighs only one pound versus a machine, it's a lot more, to calibrate a machine, a scale that is ten thousand pounds or five hundred pounds, it's, to be more accurate, it takes a little bit more skill to calibrate, and more time to calibrate the scales that are, that can accommodate heavier weight than the smaller scales. There is a cost, a scale, too.
You know how it is sometimes, is that looking at, looking at it just on paper, without really understanding the complexity of what, you know, is entailed here, does not help me in making or anyone else a decision whether, when you're, when you're looking at a cost of from two dollars to four dollars, or from five dollars to ten dollars, doesn't help me make, you know, an educated decision here. Normally, it's, look at it this way, is that you're in essence justifying why, you know, you need the increase. And maybe you need to go a little bit beyond the scale, and maybe go into, like, I surely don't know anything about linear measures that you do here, or drive, within the dry and liquid measures versus the pounds.
Senator, like you said, part of it is for the time of the inspector that's doing the calibration of the, of the measure, whether it's a weight or dry or what's a liquid measuring device. And like you said, the second part of it is, has to do with the usage of the machine, and these machines do break down after a certain amount of usage, and we, after they break down, we do have to send them to Hawaii for recalibration. So this partly to recover those costs, those two items.
Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe this question can clarify that. You know, for a scale that you're going to calibrate, which has the capacity of hundred pounds, and another scale that has a capacity of five thousand pounds, do you use the same tool, the same calibrating tool? Or the heavier the scale capacity, the higher the grade of the tool that would be required to calibrate that, that scale? In other, I mean, do you use the same tool? Maybe that is where the difference is in terms of cost, is when calibrating a scale that is hundred pound and under capacity, and if you cannot use that tool, that you just calibrated that and requires you a higher grade of tool to calibrate a five-thousand-pound capacity scale, then maybe that explains the difference in the cost. And I, so I ask you, do you use the same tool? Maybe that's a simple question. The scale at the Payless, you calibrate that. Could you use the same tool to calibrate a scale that has a capacity of five thousand pounds?
No, sir.
So what would you, what tool would you use to calibrate a scale that has the capacity of five thousand pounds? It would be a different tool, wouldn't it?
It would be a different calibrating machine.
That's, yeah, I think that's the advice I was talking, calibrating machine. So it's not one uniform calibrating machine, and you can, you can calibrate this, that, you know, and then go to the heavy equipment side and calibrate that? It would be different machines then?
Yes, we don't have to supervise here. Today and tomorrow is like our really busy day, and I don't have them up there, all hands on deck up there, so a lot of the questions that are...
But at least for this, for this, for this, for this particular matter, you don't have, you don't use the same tool, the same calibrating machine? There are other calibrating machines for a higher-capacity scale. Do you have that?
I think so, sir. Yes, it's not the same. Yes, it's not the same.
Okay, that, that's enough for now, thank you.
Senator Espada?
I just have one question. You know, as we go along in this list of all the, you know, fee increases, I'm, I'm not really sure what you mean when it says salary per hour. You're raising it from $5, which is the fee right now, it's gonna be raised to $10. What exactly are we talking about? You see, it, it's like the third item from the bottom, salary per hour, or inspector's salary per hour. Uh, in other words, you charge, uh, the customer, um, per hour?
Yes, sir.
Of your inspectors? In other, in other words, in other words, the department, you're telling me that the department is paying, let's, let's take, let's take an arbitrary number, $10 per hour, you have an inspector at $10 per hour, who's, whose job is to go out and inspect, and then you turn around and you charge the businesses who, they go out and inspect, a fee for their hourly salary per hour? Is that, is that what happens here?
I, yes, sir, uh, proportionately to the amount they spend in, in calibrating the machines there. If there's only one machine, then, uh, probably they'll spend, um, 15 minutes at the most, maybe half an hour, but...
Okay.
Maybe around that part only.
Okay, then I, I, just a follow-up question, just along the same lines then. I mean, I, I can see how, uh, because of cost increases in doing business just over the past several years, that there may be a justification to raise some of these fees. Would you attribute that maybe perhaps also to the potential need for future employees? Uh, because, because you're gonna be seeing an increase in the number of retail establishments, say, for example, who will have scales and other kinds of machines that you would have to calibrate? I mean, is, is that in, is this, are these fee increases in anticipation of that, that you may need more people, or you may need some new equipment to be able to carry out the services?
Sir, it's, it's more at this point in time just to cover the cost. Uh, there's a lot of mom and pop stores and, and, um, establishments like Cosulets and Kmart, and we do have to inspect all of those, uh, weights and measures, and we only, we only have around, uh, three employees right now doing those, going around the island.
Right, and that's why the question does beg, and, and, you know, and I would assume, at least I'm assuming, that one of the reasons why we're looking for at least some increase in fees is so that we can actually perhaps bring on more people in support of revenue and taxation to carry out this mission along those lines. Is that correct? Is that kind of a correct assumption?
If, if the need arises, yes, sir, we will, we will make the request.
That's all, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Logano wanted to also comment on that.
Just to go back on the per hour, um, that's not the, the charge that, that we, uh, expend. That's just because we already charge on the top, we're taking a portion on the bottom to, to take in count the fees, uh, or the cost per employee that goes out, uh, and, and inspects the, uh, the scales.
Alright, um, alright, we are now on section four. Senator Pangolino?
Art, can you just explain, explain this, what is a public weighmaster? Is this a private individual that's licensed by the department?
Yes, sir, that's, uh...
So, so you don't actually do the inspection, the public weighmaster does?
It's, we don't, the department doesn't do that, sir.
I'm kinda curious. What does the public weighmaster do? Does he calibrate the scales above?
Sir, it, it has to do with the, sir, it has to do with the measurement of, uh, this is the, um, the equipment that measures anything more than, more than 10,000 pounds.
So this is, the, there's, there's an individual who's licensed, he's a private individual, he gets a public weighmaster's license, he's certified to calibrate machines above 10,000 pounds?
Yes, sir.
So he's in the private sector? He doesn't work for the department?
He doesn't work for the department.
Okay, and then whatever he charges, he negotiates between himself and the owner of the scale?
That's my understanding, sir.
Okay, and so you're increasing his business license? Is this on top of his business license?
That's the license fee, sir. Sir, that's the license fee.
But doesn't that, he has to get a public weighmaster's license, then he has to get a service license on top of that? Is that correct?
No, that, that's the license itself to, in order to, to become a public weighmaster.
Okay, so it is basically his service license?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so are we increasing all other service license by that amount? Same?
There are different ways, not, there, there are some, some licenses that we're, we're looking at, like apartments, if you own a multi, multi, uh, apartment complex, it's not fair that we only charge 25. When you have a duplex, it's 25, it's the same fee you charge, uh, somebody who has 100 apartments.
Okay.
That's all in, in the license section.
Alright, I just, was curious, I didn't know what he was. Thank you.
Nothing else on section four? Section five? Um, also, Mr. Logano made it clear for the benefit of the members, um, tomorrow's a very important day for them, he needs to resolve the revenue and taxation related issues today because of the, it's the biggest tax day of the year, so on section five. Senator Pangolino?
Again, Art, the, um, is there a difference between the paperwork involved in any of the licenses that you have here and the public weighmaster's license?
The public weighmaster is a, a license that we give somebody, um, that would go out and calibrate, let's say...
Scales?
A scale.
Yeah, so...
On his own, that somebody would contract him to do.
Right, like a real estate agent's license?
Right.
Right, okay. And so what is, what is, um, there is no, uh, no existing manufacturer's license fee? Or is, or is $100 the existing fee and you're not raising it? Just the way, I'm kinda looking at the way the bill's written?
Right.
Says there's a class one manufacturer's license, and it says $100 per year. Is that an existing fee and it's not being raised, or is that a new fee being put in place?
Um, Senator, this applies to alcoholic beverages, uh, control?
Yes, the alcoholic beverage. So there's no, uh, current license fee for a manufacturer?
Um, there, there is a current license, sir. We, we just set, set this fee in here, and we underline those which...
Are being changed.
That are being changed.
Right, so the current license for a manufacturer is $100, that's the current?
It stays the same, sir.
It stays, that's what I'm trying to ask.
Yes, sir.
Just to try to get the reading.
It stays the same, yes, sir.
Alright, and then the agent's license is 250 and remains the same?
Yes, sir.
And you're increa, increasing a wholesale, wholesale dealer's license from 500 to 1,000?
Yes, sir.
Why?
Partly, most of these fees have not been, have not been, uh, uh, changed way back in the 60s, and one of the, one of the things we, if we look at the, um, if we, if we look at the, uh... The salaries of our, of our, um, employees at the time compared in 1962 and compared at this time, uh, we're barely making up for the cost of, uh, inspection of this establishment, sir.
Mm-hmm, okay. And the manufacturer's license, was this kinda the same time that we did the wholesaler's license? Or is that a new license?
It's, it's different, sir. I, I believe there's only one, uh, one manufacturer's license right now.
Okay, yeah. I'm just trying to understand again the rationale, you know, in terms of...
Yes, sir.
Why we're making these changes and, and the amounts that we're making the changes? I mean, it really has to be tied into the cost of the department, and the fact that, um, that these costs, um, you know, i- if we're, if we're going to place the burden on the users of the service, which is fine with me, then somewhere along the line, we've gotta kinda counterbalance that, that, uh, that increased cost here, meet, should mean a reduction in the burden on the other end unless we just want to retain more of the money we make, so...
There's a lot of, um, projects that could be done in, in business license.
Right.
Uh, recently, there was a law that was passed that, uh, um, each corporation must file annually.
Yes.
That's cost, I mean, that, and they didn't put a, a cost or a, um, um, a budget for it, uh, it just said do this and, and charge $100.
Right.
What that did to us is, uh, uh, made people file more papers with us, and we don't have the software or to capture that data, because that data is very important to enforcement of, of, of laws.
That's exactly why I did that.
If you need to find out somebody's name, and you have to go one by one to look up, uh, somebody's, uh, corporate papers and who the ta, the shareholders are, so, um, the increase in, in, in these fees is to accommodate, hopefully, uh, these, these costs of operating, um, um, business license.
Okay, no, I, I understand, Art, and I just wanna make sure that in fact you will do that.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Um, again, we're just basically doubling it up, we just decided we're gonna double it.
Uh, we looked at what it...
Actually, we quadrupled some in some cases.
Yeah.
Um, yes, sir. Part of, part of the reason is that the, the Urban and Lakes Clerical, uh, CPI index from 1965, 1972 to present is already around 500 plus. It's part of it, that's part, part, part of the reason, sir.
Right, part, it's over 500%, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then we're complaining because the COLA is at 87, when it actually, the actual inflation rate's 500 plus, so I think the government got a good deal on the COLA. Thank you.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Hi, Art.
Hi.
Um, just wanting to get a clarification on class four and class five regarding, uh, retail dealers' on signs, on sale license versus a retail dealer's off sale license, because you have for both beer here, on an on sale, you have it from 150 to 300, but then on an off sale, you have it from 50 to 200. So what are the differences and maybe what the differences between the two for, for, for clarification?
I'll let John answer that, that's...
Um, Senator, basically, basically on sale, um, refers to, the license refers to those establishments like, um, bars and hotels that serves alcoholic beverages. In other words, you can, when you buy the, the alcoholic beverages, you can consume it right there and there. The, uh, off sale establishments are those where you just buy the beverage itself, but you cannot consume it there. So the, the, there, uh, there's less work on, on our people, uh, doing inspection. They do more inspection on the establishments that are doing on, on sale.
Okay, and this, eh, um, Mr. Carlos, if there's any specific reason why there's a, a different license for a special alcoholic license versus the class seven at a temporary beer license, and, and the price, and the price differences?
Our special alcoholic license is pertaining only to, um, sale of alcohol that's being used for ceremonial purposes like, uh, religious organizations, something like that, and the, um, uh, the other one is more, um, general in usage.
Say that again?
The, the other one is general in usage.
General usage?
Temporary, although it's temporary, the, the same amount of work still entails there because we still have to, uh, verify the place, verify the, uh, the, uh, that the, the ones doing the sale don't have any, uh...
Establishes.
Background, that the police won't allow them to, uh, do some sale of alcoholic beverages. It's a little bit stringent in sale of alcoholic beverages.
So then, and, and as far as class 10 on the, on the temporary genu, uh, general license, how does that apply?
Um, the, the temporary is, Senator, um, is, is mostly on the, on a daily basis, so they, they do it like, uh, if there is a, a kind of a liberation, uh, festivities, so they do apply for, for that, and whoever wants to sell...
Like a carnival license or a fiesta license if they're gonna have a fundraising event?
Yes, yes, Senator.
So that would be the temporary general license?
That's mostly where it's being issued.
Okay, so i- i- in the temporary general license to sell the alcoholic beverages, you'd still have to get the class seven and class 10, am I right? Would that be way, the way it's applied?
Uh, if they do get a, a general, they don't need to get a...
Temporary.
Temporary beer license. If it's just, uh, if it's just number seven, so they're limiting themselves to sale of , uh, beer.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Carlos.
Speaker Pangolino?
Okay, uh, yeah, I wanna go back to, to the same line of, line of questioning with, uh, as Senator Munia Barnes. On, on class seven and class six, you said class six is, um, special alcoholic licenses for ceremonial?
Mostly, mostly for ceremonial, yes, sir.
Yeah, ceremonial of what? Like, like the priest, for example, they buy, do they buy license, oh, do they get a license to, you know, for the church? You know, to buy liquor or what? They're alcoholics. No, no, ser- seriously, uh...
And ser- seriously, they, it's, it's not only the priest, there are some other religions that are, are also...
So, but see, they're not selling it, they're, they're just procuring it. So what ceremony are you talking about? You know, when you buy, it's already, the, the price includes the taxes, right? But you can, you have to pay, there's no taxes for the ceremonial part?
Sir, thi- this is more like to authorize the religious organization to, to buy.
To buy? Oh, I, I've never heard of that. That you, you have to buy a license, you know, to get a license to buy liquor? It's, it's the, the selling of the liquor, the seller of the liquor is the one that buy, you know, gets the license?
Sir, and normally, normally, the, the only ones that are allowed to, that are allowed to, to buy promo品 and the alcoholic beverages are the wholesalers. If you're licensed wholesalers, you're allowed to, to do that. Uh, however, for this...
For religious purposes, like...
My understanding is, is...
The Catholic Church buying, uh, wine by the cases?
They can buy on their own.
Okay, that's what you're saying then?
That's, that's my understanding, sir.
I guess it's, that's, uh, lost in the translation of that. Uh, okay, on li, on class seven, temporary beer license, you're going to charge $100 per day? Okay, for example, let me bring a, you know, like liberation day, they have over a month, so that means that they have to pay about maybe, how many, $3,000 for a per day license for, for temporary beer license? Wouldn't it be cheaper for them then to, to buy a, a general license or to get a general license? Because it'll be at $1,000? See, it's, it'd be cheaper.
Y- yes, sir, it will be cheaper for them, um, it's different when it, the establishment is, is doing it in a enclosed surrounding where the consumption is...
Well, why, why don't you...
It's not open to the, uh, to the minors.
Well, all of them are not open to the minors.
We're, we're trying to discourage consumption of alcoholic beverages in, in, in areas where minors can, can, uh, see the, uh, people in the festivities, uh, consuming the, uh, beer, for example.
Well, your, your, your job is... Well, your, your, your job is to enforce the law, right? Joe? It's not a question of you setting the law. And it's, so, so the intent then of having it $100 per day is to discourage minors from buying liquor? Is that the intent of charging $100 a day? Per day? Yeah, this is what it says here, temporary beer license, $100 per day. Wouldn't it be more practical to say $100 for, you know, for that special license? For that special occasion, like for Liberation Day? Or for, you know, Fiesta?
Senator, if you have a nonprofit organization, okay, like Father Duñez has something at the Phoenix Center, okay? They have to apply for a temporary license to sell beer per day, okay? Per occasion, per day. I think that this is what they're, that's, this is what we're charging.
How do you, how do you take care of, like, say Liberation Day or on Fiesta? Like, they usually, now, they do have, you know, the mayors, they have a...
Right, right. Like a carnival.
Carnival, uh-huh. So how do you take care of that?
I just know that the temporary beer license is like for one occasion for a nonprofit, okay? I don't know what they do with the...
So how do you handle Liberation Day?
It's, I believe it's the same thing. It's just that we indicate a year per day on the change. Maybe the intent is like that.
No, that's why we need to make it clear. Otherwise, man, they'll be charged $3,000 for a license or... And so I would like to make the motion that you just say a temporary beer license? Of course, that, that was stayed from what date to, you know, from the beginning to per event? Yeah, I think, I, I, I think that needs an amendment right now.
We'll entertain that. If you wanna go ahead and put that in writing, and we'll go to the other speaker.
Okay. Let me...
We'll give you time to craft your amendment.
Yeah, but I still have a lot, you know, another question on Class 10, temporary general license per day, $100. What do you mean by that? Is that the same as special occasion like you mentioned earlier? Like the, the one you mentioned about Father D? You know, having an occasion where they get a temporary general license? So that's on a per-day basis too, here?
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
What it means is they're able to sell, aside from beer, they're able to sell other type of alcoholic beverages.
And so if they have it for two days, they charge $200, right?
Yes, sir.
Isn't that rather stiff? So that, that is, you know, Mr. Chairman, my concern right now, just maybe an amendment to that portion. But the thing is, I don't know what's reasonable and how, how are we gonna put that thing down as Florida? Unless we have another section here that identify what a temporary is and what's a special is and what's a regular license.
All right. We'll go ahead and entertain another, if you have another amendment on that. This time, Senator Cava.
Again, maybe, just as a, to take a look at the current environment in Guam and, and the type of scenarios where you have the temporary beer license. Again, what was mentioned earlier is you have, you could have the Liberation Day festivities where it goes on for a month. You could have one of these one-time events. You had, you had a fighting event just a few days ago, and over 4,000 people showed up. And you, obviously, you can see where, where the $100, you know, amount could easily be absorbed by the sponsors. Then at the same time, you have, you could have an event that was mentioned earlier on a Fiesta where, where there is just a, a situation where for that particular day, there's only gonna be a certain type of volume. And with that, the percentage of that $100 will be much greater than, than, let's say, if you had an event where 4,000 people came. There have been concerts that have been in Guam that have been big hits, and also there have been failures where you'd have, you'd have a dud. And with that dud and only 200 people showed up, you know, of course, that, if they took a temporary beer license, it would be a bigger percentage of the, of what was the, the, probably the beer sales would have been. I don't know. I'm not too sure how to treat this, other than maybe if you were to do it per event and where you would have a temporary beer license per event, it would take into consideration, at least for Liberation Day. This, you know, obviously, they have 30 days to, to, to pay back for that license. You may not have 4,000 people one day, but the cumulative effect would be the, would be the, would be the same over 30 days. Of course, that would not solve the problem if you have a one-day event and not too many, there wasn't that big a volume of people to participate. Again, that's just an open question I'm putting out in regards to this particular issue. And, you know, my recommendation could be, rather than per day, per event. That would at least solve the Liberation Day. I'm not gonna throw out that amendment, other than listening to some of the proposals, the issues brought up by the former speaker here. Maybe that would be one way to deal with the, some of the issues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We are still on the Section, Section 5. I understand some of the members would like to make amendment. We're gonna go ahead and take a two-minute break. I'd like to ask you to go ahead and put your amendment together, if you have any, so that we can expedite. As I said, tomorrow is the biggest tax day, and these gentlemen need to get back to their work for tomorrow. So two minutes to take a break. Can be the whole be recessed?